Good evening, this is the Committee of the Whole for February 13th. Please rise, tonight will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mrs. Murgatroyd's MEC kindergarten class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have created a gift for all of you that we'd like to present to show our appreciation. One thing that we have always said is that it takes a village and this group that we have this year, all 30 children, really it has been a village that has helped us get to this point and we've been doing an amazing job, well the children, their parents, the staff, everyone has done an amazing job, so we created this for all of you as a present, so. The children also wrote a book that they'd like to give you each a copy of.
Wow.
So if you wouldn't mind, they just like to read their page really quick, we'd like to, it will only take a minute, but I'd like to read through, so. Do you mind just passing them down? Thank you. So it says, "We are so proud of our school" by Mrs. Murgatroyd's class. In the front you'll find some quotes that I thought were pretty meaningful to us and our group. There were a couple of children who were not able to make it tonight, but I'd like to just read theirs very quickly. The first one says, "I am so proud I can count to 100 because now I am in the 100 Club." I am so proud when I am good in gym because we play games. I am so proud I can count because it makes me happy. I am so proud to earn Hero Bucks because I am so good. We have Hero Bucks that they get to earn to win prizes. I am so proud when I see Mrs. Cepther because she is an amazing principal. I am so proud I can do math because it is fun. I am so proud of Mrs. Howe because she is a nice teacher. I am so proud of Mrs. Murgatroyd because she is a great teacher. Destiny, would you like to read yours?
I am so proud when I work with Mrs. Howe because she helps me.
I am so proud of Ms. Smith because she counts to 100 with me and her coffee cup is in the picture.
I am so proud of I count to 100 at payroll to destroy cut down the trees. You're happy to get back to me and to count to 100 and traps and.
I am so proud of earning games because I get to get Hero Bucks. I am so proud when I do good work because I get Hero Bucks from Mrs. Murgatroyd. You tell the Hero Bucks are very exciting. And. You just read yours today, right? Yeah. No, 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 he just read it, I just had a book that had it in it because he read it today.
Kayden or Kayden?
Oh no, how did that happen? He just read it out of the book today. Don't worry, I will get it in there. Uh-huh, I get Hero Bucks and earn us a prize. Do you mind if I collect those in the meeting again? I'm not sure where it went, but we read it today. Thank you so much. We will get you each a copy of this. I appreciate all of the things that you have done to make this happen for us because our children are doing such an amazing job. Thank you. Boys and girls, as your school principal, I am so proud of you, so can you please come up when I call your name and you'll get a certificate and you get to take home. Destiny, can you come on up? This is Mr. Harris, we should bring him in. Excellent, excellent. Jayden Becker, come on up. And Stephen Augustin, come on up. I also apologize, we had nine children coming, but we had a lot of illness, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much for the poster you made us too, that was very nice, thank you.
Is that everybody's hands? That is all virtual, only kids' hands, yeah. They all did it together. Nice job.
Great job. Okay, if the parents and students, if you would like to leave, now would be the time to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, kids. Mr. Martino, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Mrs. Byes?
Here.
Mr. Curves?
Here.
Mr. Martino?
Here.
Mr. Ocaso-Neal?
Here.
Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Radka?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Wodowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here. Okay, the procedures for public participation are printed in the inside of the board agenda. Any of the attachments for the agenda are located somewhere over here on the desk for your viewing, please don't take them with you. If you haven't already done so, please sign, make sure you sign in the ledger for attending tonight's meeting. At the appropriate time, if you would like to address the board, you would approach a podium, sign in up there, state your name and your address for the record. When you begin speaking, you'll be timed, three minutes, and I guess we don't have our timer with us, so you'd be afforded three minutes to address the board. Okay, there are two agenda edits. The first edit is under six personnel, to remove A1B Carol Pertle, that transfer, that is to be removed, and then add under B1A Carol Pertle, Special Edge Secretary, Level Three, resignation effective February the 12th. Is it? Is that, I'm sorry, that's on the, that's on the special voting meeting, sorry, I didn't notice that. For the Committee of the Whole meeting, the one agenda edit is attachment C9, the minutes, change page to, new business, it was identified as Coventry Christian Bussing, it's actually Burke's Christian, so that was the only change there. Okay, there's no plan to have an executive session after this meeting. Are there any public, is there any public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll start with the superintendent report.
Mr. Wolf, before, I've got a couple of agenda edits.
Okay.
Under the curriculum and instruction, I'd like to discuss the Pledge of Allegiance.
So it'll be 11C?
Yes. Under facilities, I'd like to discuss the Coral Reef project. And under facilities, I'd like to discuss purchase orders and donations.
What's the last one, please?
Under facilities, I'd like to discuss purchase orders and donations.
So those will be identified as A and L. Are there any other agenda edits?
Under the report.
No. Any tenured? Okay.
Okay. Tonight, I'd like to recognize some students who do some outstanding work, and the first person is Harrison Potts. Come on down. He earned the rank of Eagle Scout, Kentucky, he's in the wood. Would you mind stepping to the mic and explaining? We'll do the whole thing.
Yeah, okay. So, my Eagle Scout project, I constructed five entries near the middle school park, and then around, started the process of doing it in the beginning of June of 2015, then went down and finished it in early May 2016. And as of now, I'm putting on classes officially done, I have my Court of Honor in October, so everything is official.
Cool, alright, thank you. It's a little tight.
Harrison, congratulations.
Okay, we also have, from this past week, and we have several art students from the high school who participated in the Fast Lane Art Competition, which is a contest that awards prizes to students, as well as displays their artwork on billboards along Route 422. Of the 10 total awards for students, four of them went to Daniel Boone students. The first one is Jase, I'm sure I'm gonna say this wrong, what's that?
LaBourbier.
LaBourbier. I'm from New Jersey. Let's do, let's do all at the same time.
Okay.
No, no, stay there, stay there, stay there.
Okay.
We have Taylor Szazinski, People's Choice Award. We have Justin Rogosin, Rogosin?
Justine Rogosin.
Rogosin, Justin. And Caitlin McGregor, who I love to mess with. So can you explain, can you explain what the art project is? Can you go to the mic and explain?
Yay! Okay, so what we did was, for this fast lane, we each submitted an art project from our AP Art class, and Ms. Schreiber was gracious enough to let us know about the contest, so we each submitted pieces, basically, and for Taylor's, it was on Facebook, and it had the most liked by a lot, like it was crazy ass liked. And then Jason was chosen by the committee, Justine had honorable mention as third, and then I got first, so it was all very exciting, and we won a lot of the awards, which we did not really expect to win more out of the 10, but yeah, so that's what happened. It was great.
Yeah, right, that's cool.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So who sponsored that? It was Fast Lane by the Burke's Arts Council. Yes, it was their talent.
Taylor, yeah, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
I'll sweep you for last.
Yes, you're a star. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we also have the Burke's Career and Technology Center Students of the Quarter. If you're here, come on down. Jacob Shanley for Auto Technology. Damien Haben for Carpentry. Samuel McDonald for Culinary Arts. Renee Alberser, Dental Occupations. Zachary Schnabel, Drafting Design Technology. Farin Hagopian, Health Related Technology. And Damian Clark, Masoner. One more, one more. Jackson Darlington, Service Occupations. Guys, could you go to the mic and just explain what the program is a little bit?
Alright, I'm in automotive technology, but student of the quarter for us is, for me, it was, I was the most improved from Level One, which was three years ago, and I put in a lot of hard work, and then I get student of the quarter.
Me, I got for, hard work and I did a lot of hard work, or what are you?
Thank you. I'm in Carpentry, this is my first year at Tech, and I really, I really like Carpentry. We had the opportunity to work on building a house there, at school.
I'm a Mason, and I guess one of the hours, I do my work and go pull out, and I get grades, and I work hard.
Good.
31 years. Diane Colby, are you? Oh, I don't have my glasses on. Don't tell them that I tried to kidnap you to keep you here the other day, so if you could just put you on the spot and you could go in comfortable.
Thank you for this recognition. My, a fun fact, I've been part of Daniel Boone since 1965 when I entered kindergarten. My father was on the school board back in the early 1960s, and I have great respect for this district, it's an honor for me to be part of the district for as long as I have. We have wonderful people here, we have really committed teachers, and as I said to my students the very last day of school, we're gonna do fine if we do more things. We respect one another, we listen to one another, we think about what people say, and then we question. And so may we always have those abilities, and may you continue to do all the good works to do here, and thank you for being able to be part of this. Thank you very much.
Okay, for those students that were recognized and their families, if you would like to go home, that's, you won't hurt our feelings.
I love this one. Everybody leaves. You can stay. You guys can stay. You guys can stay. It's a lone one here.
If all you in the back want to move front, you can.
Everybody's leaving.
That's all right.
Take some of the pressure off the next two people. Alright, we also have tonight a presentation from Creative Health Services. Can you come on down, please?
I'm Karen Becker, Director of Outpatient Services from Creative Health. And this is Frank Poga, Director of Children's Services at Creative Health. We've come to speak to you this evening on behalf of Creative Health, which is the Community Behavioral Health Center located in Parktown, Pennsylvania. Recently, we were looking at some data of the population that we serve, and what we discovered was that we are currently serving over 250 families from the Daniel Boone School District. Frank and I have a very unique situation, we work very closely together, creating the outpatient services and children's services, which allows us the opportunity to say, what can we do for our community? Where are we servicing our children? What are the needs? At that point, we contacted Mr. Harris and asked if we could talk to him about the possibility of placing outpatient services within the district, a satellite office. We've done that in other schools and they have been successful, and when we do this, this helps to remove the barriers of education because the children are able to receive services right at the school. When we talk about that, we say, well, what does that mean? We can offer a vast array of services here. We offer individuals, we offer groups, and by doing that, we're working together with families, with school, and the community. Frank, what, how could we help services and what can we do?
Just really quick while we start talking about things, I appreciate being able to have the opportunity to meet with you over the last month or so. As Karen mentioned a few minutes ago, this is a very unique situation that we are both Daniel Boone residents, we are in positions at Creative Health as Director of Children's Services and Director of Outpatient, which we work very closely together. Part of our discussion of what we can do, and we can be concrete if we like, is that we do have a lot of experience dealing with kids that are in emotionally fragile situations. You know, my department, at Creative Health, I run our wraparound, I run our student assistance, there are brochures in there, other programs that we offer in Montgomery County that we may not offer here, through my department, last year alone, we serviced 8,500 kids, you know, through my department, that's my department alone. Each level has, each program has a level that goes up like steps in the ladder, and a level of intensity, but this has been an area that we've worked with in at least two other school districts, because part of the piece that we look for is engaging kids in treatment. You know, we look at assessment and prevention. The concept that we came up with originally, that we've looked in other districts, is putting an outpatient satellite facility at the elementary level, at the middle school level, at the high school level. Also looking for a clinical staff that is potential to be able to hopefully take primary insurance who's loads medical assistance, so all families can access services. Whether it's been publicized or not, you know, over the last five to six years, Creative Health has offered to provide emotional support when necessary to the district, those have been generally just through phone calls, just when, you know, we've had some, you know, areas of need, you know, but this is an area that we felt that we wanted to give back to the community, and I think that's, it's an area that would be very beneficial in dealing with kids on the emotional level. I do better with question and answers too, so if there's any questions, feel free to ask.
I will say, to go back a little bit of what Frank just said, Frank and I are longtime citizens of the school district, we are longtime employees of Creative Health, so we are both passionate about the work that we do, as well as the community that we live in, so you know, we come to, we come to the board with that as a package, saying, you know, we have an interest, we really have a concern about our community, and we truly have an interest in this school district. My children have gone through this school district, my grandchildren are now starting in here, so we're very passionate about what happens in our own community.
I guess one question for Mr. Harris, I mean, we had a presentation a month or two ago for, I'm not gonna say similar, but related, how are, are they different, or are they not?
Well, with Creative Health, they can also see staff members, and they can also work on the insurance side, where if someone is either not insured or underinsured, and assist them in getting the proper insurance available, if you want to explain how that's done. That's the one thing that led me to work with them.
So they're, they're over, they're providing the same service?
Same service, it's just on the Creative Health side, it's a little more expansive because they can also see our staff, not board members. I did check, so we did check.
I wasn't here for the last presentation, but I listened to the meeting, and I thought, they only provided service, I think, to state insurance, I think, wasn't it, only there was state insurance, if you had regular insurance, or I guess marketplace insurance, they, I don't think they participated in that.
They were, they were trying to get certified for it, but Creative Health is up and running, they're already here, I know her son, we all know her son.
In a very, in a way, I need to tell you in an excellent way, I promise you.
He was in Mr. Boone last year. But, and their ability to service all, a lot more of our needs, and also work with our families who are underinsured, that would be in our building, and that's what the administration's recommending, Creative Health, that we go with.
Is the requirement still the same, they need a dedicated space that?
Yes.
That would be used for that, and we would have to?
Yes.
Okay.
Work out some sort of arrangement for them to be at a location, but same, same situation, however, their ability to service more of our student body and our staff also.
Okay.
So this is a group that we're recommending. So this is a group that we're recommending that you go with. I just wanted to bring them here tonight if you had any questions. I know we saw a similar group, however, they seem to have a program and ready to up and run and ready to get involved with us. So they're here for questions.
Here's a quick question. Are you a nonprofit or a for-profit organization?
Nonprofit.
You mentioned earlier how you've worked with friends in the district. I think you mentioned it, I'm listening like three members or something. Can you say that again? Yeah, how many residents did you say you worked with? What, 50 families?
250 families. We have, our database shows us within the Daniel Boone School District. We are currently serving over 250 families.
Is there anything you think that we as a district could do better from your, with your expertise and all that, that we might not know as folks who have stood up here?
I'm going to let Frank speak to that one.
My daughter's a senior this year, you know, my son's in sixth grade. Well, I have said consistently that my kids have gotten an excellent education through Daniel Boone School District. I think everybody tries to enhance what they do. You know, I think everybody shows effort, that's all you can ask. But I've been very pleased with the education my kids have received. They answered just a couple of questions with responses. That is 250 families this year, within the last year. So as time goes on, you know, we have an office that's up in the Matthew Brook Building that has been utilized, you know, over the last 10 to 15 years. We've already been in the community, we already have a physical sign of community. This is a process like anything else. Because I know you guys have to go through certain things. We have to go through a licensure, the dedicated space, we have to get county approval, we have to get the insurance company to fund it. That is natural for everything else. The question that you had earlier about a nonprofit. Everybody views a nonprofit differently. You know, the way we view, or at least I view, I believe we view at Creative Health, is Creative Health is truly a nonprofit, you know, in that a true nonprofit offers services to the community whether you make money or you lose money. You know, we're considered the behavioral health center of this area for a reason in Montgomery County. You know, that there are programs that provide surplus. That surplus goes to programs that do not make money. A good example is, you know, we gave the brochures of a bunch of different things. You know, we run our CIP SHOT for kids, because it's always focused on the child, you know, the kids that are concerned with. What about the siblings that are also dealing with it? You know, the ones that feel missing out. You know, we do children's safe. Those are programs that Creative Health chooses to provide. And we choose to provide those from, you know, within our community. So just because people, you know, there are people that bring up a nonprofit. I'm very proud, I think, for it to be a nonprofit. Well, I'm done? All right, there you go.
I think I'm too, we're too close to the...
Listen, speak to them.
I'll try it this way.
Okay.
I just have one, one thought. And I know obviously you guys work under confidentiality. But do you think because you're so close to the community, some kids might not want to go to you folks because, you know, you're so well, you know, connected in the community, but they would feel funny?
I will try that. Hey, there's great kids in this community. And I've been fortunate enough to coach my, my child, you know, in baseball, basketball, football. You know, people do outreach to me. I'd rather be, it makes me feel uncomfortable that I'm there to help people in this community. So can there be some that would sit there and say, I'm too close to this situation? By the way, I'm getting older too. I'm more of a background, you know. I have people coming in and do, you know, the work, you know, and we work directly with the kids. I'm more of an administrator as far as goes on.
Very good. Thank you.
I'm going to agree with Frank to some extent with that. And unfortunately, as in other school districts, tragedy has struck down a bone. And again, being a parent and a member of the community, I both reached out and experienced the school reaching out to me through my work to help with anybody that we might need to send in for counselors. I think that as professionals, you know, confidentiality is certainly not a problem. And some of these children, Frank and I are not going to probably see them on a regular basis. And the counselor that's going to come in here will be selected and confidentiality will be a priority.
Quick question, I'm sorry. What are the mechanics of this then? Does our guidance counselor refer a student to, a family to you?
So we, I'll try and walk you through a little bit. What this would look like is your staff team can refer, a parent could refer, whoever feels that there's something going on, that perhaps the child needs some help. And it, you know, sometimes we have children who are actually coming to our office in Pottstown, but they're missing appointments because the parent can't get there. We were asking parents to sometimes pull children out of school. And sometimes that's not really a great idea for some children. We're asking parents to leave work. Sometimes that's not possible. And then the child's not receiving the care that they need because it's just not possible. Sometimes it's a transportation issue, they can't get there. That's where we're removing some of those barriers.
So if you're in our schools, you're not going to be like walking down the hallways and trying to snag kids in?
No.
You have to keep it like solicitation.
No, we are not out there, we are not out there, we are not out there snacking.
Okay.
They will refer to us. They'll refer to us and intake will be done to see the appropriateness of what they need.
Good, thank you.
Yes. Do you have a space in every school?
We are certainly, that will be up to your school district. But we are certainly prepared to be able to put an office and to staff an office in every building.
It's really based on need and the population that's there.
We would certainly like to look to have the license in every building because that allows you to have the best opportunity for treatment.
What kind of staff do you envision in each building? How many people usually in there?
Well, again, that's going to depend on your need. And that changes. Sometimes we see little school might have a whole bunch because you're adjusting to a whole new thing. The staff that I'm looking for, or what we're looking for, is going to be someone who is licensed so that they can accept and work with private insurance, as well as the underinsured and non-insured.
Do you just send a student out of this location?
We will not. We do have four psychiatrists on staff at Creative Health, which, you know, if that's the case, they can certainly utilize one of our psychiatrists or their, if that's the case, if that's what's needed.
Do you have a place in Birdsboro, did you say that?
We do, we have an office in the Matthew Brook Building.
So people are in Pottstown. You've indicated that the people in Pottstown, the Birdsboro location, not servicing those people in Daniel Boone, it just doesn't matter very often.
Some utilize that. I mean, it is an office that is utilized as needed or as clinician wants to work out of that office. I mean, Frank utilizes it.
We look at our, by the way, the medication piece was an excellent question. We utilize our Robyn Street as a starting point. You know, once they come in for an intake, there are opportunities for them to be seen in other sites. You know, so once they come through the intake for us to gather the information, they may, we may sit there and say, we have no link in Birdsboro. Would you like to be seen in Birdsboro or would you like to be seen in Pottstown?
So those 250 families have an option to be seen in Birdsboro if they, if you intake in that location? And when that location's there, then if you service our school, yes?
Karen said yes.
Absolutely.
The 250 families are who have the entire agency. You know, they come through my department, they go through the outpatient department. We're very fortunate that we have a full array of services in a different intensity level. But no, some families, you know, like the girls who care in his department, you know, they have a choice of being seen in Pottstown and there have been people that said, I'd rather be seen in Birdsboro.
So when you say full array of services, can you kind of explain what is that? How difficult is that to say? I'm confused when you're talking like this.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, I don't know what you're talking about.
Rather quickly, a full array of services is just like anything else you have a starting point. You know, the lowest level when we're talking about for kids is outpatient therapy, where somebody walks into an office, they see somebody once a week, say for an hour, and then they walk back out. Under our outpatient, which we've talked about, families also access medication management. You know, so they have an opportunity to possibly see one of our psychiatrists. So that's the first level of care. The second level of care is my level of care, which is wraparound. And it's for kids that have not been as successful in an outpatient setting or we feel that they may need something more once a week. Then it comes into my department, which is the wraparound department. You know, through the wraparound, and we've dealt with a multitude of school districts, including Daniel Boone. The highest, Creative Health also offers the highest level, I guess, which is family-based. And our family base is for kids that are, you know, that are registered at an adult home place. Whereas a team of two people, you know, with intense family therapy. But those are the three main children's levels of care right now in the state.
Would you be able to help us maybe with something drug epidemic that's happening? Call struggling to relieve patients? I mean, teenagers are affected by it in our...
I would be very happy, I'll be happy to address that.
Mrs. McGee, if you would, if you would just go ahead and sign in then up at the podium.
I will be, I would be happy to address that because in outpatient services...
I have a bias in our high schools and our middle schools, that's all. And if you can help with that, I would really be very grateful.
As the Director of Outpatient Services, I see both outpatient for mental health and for drug and alcohol. So I actually incorporate all of that under outpatient services. Part of what I do at Creative Health is I also have an opiate overdose survivor team that I am on call 24 hours, seven days a week, and I have a team for that. And we go to the Pottstown Hospital for any opiate overdose survivor. And we try to engage in treatment right away. Yes, there's several from this area that we get called for, absolutely. Now, when we talk about treatment in school, we have to understand licensure. And we're talking about a mental health license in the buildings, which is different than drug and alcohol. Some day they will merge, but as right now, they're separate entities. Now, to help you out with that, I work a very integrated, my therapists are very integrated. So they work both in drug and alcohol and mental health. They work as co-occurring therapists. So my staff is very familiar with how to work with the opiate epidemic.
Is there any other work?
So you would be offering, if you had a location at each school, for example, the plan is to offer all levels of service? Or would it be solely based on need through the initial?
Well, we can only offer outpatient services here. However, we can make the referrals for the other services if they're needed. But it would be outpatient-based. Now, what that means is it would be both, you can have individual and you can have group as well. We have groups that run at Robinson, as well as some of our schools. And those groups are both coping with anxiety, coping with depression, social skills. So there's a couple of things that encompass outpatient.
I have a question. I am sorry. I have a sophomore at the high school. Would I know if he's seeing you as a parent?
Oh, as a parent? Absolutely. So the way we've done this in other schools is, of course, the student is going to have to have an intake or an assessment. And paperwork is going to be needed. Now, the age of consent is 14 for somebody seeking services for mental health, for drug and alcohol, there is no age of consent. A five-year-old can walk in and say they want treatment without any parental input. However, in order to have this work for both community, family, and home, parents are going to have to at least be a part of the team. Especially if there's insurance. We run into problems where if you're going to do insurance, they're going to get EOB. And I'm going to wonder, what's this explanation of benefits? So it's best to keep everybody on board as to what's going on because if we're accessing or utilizing somebody's insurance, you certainly, I mean, as a parent, yes. I get it. A 14-year-old is going to have to tell you there are services. As a parent, we want to know that because we want to work as a team.
And once a child's in your program, I'm assuming there's no back and forth or sharing of information with the school's counselors?
We will sign releases of information, absolutely. It's confidential, we sign releases. And whatever is under the guidelines that we can disclose, we do.
I'm sorry, can you clarify? Did we answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I guess what I'm drawing at is the counselor refers a student to you for their reasons. They're in your program. There's no confirming between the counselor and the therapist on an ongoing basis.
If the family, look at it if you're going into an office.
Yeah.
That office says you went down to Pottstown, that's what we're talking about. That guidance counselor does not get a chance to get any information unless a release is signed by the family. So if the guidance department is referring a child to an outpatient counselor that's physically in a site, we cannot share any information unless the family chooses to sign a release. So they will be making, and that's common practice in mental health regardless. But a written release has to be signed for us to discuss any type of information about a child.
And then I, this may be a question for Mr. Harris, but someone touched on this earlier. You know, is the room going to be marked as the therapy room where, you know, I see another student go in there, then I know that student's going to see a therapist?
That's a question that's come up before. There has, we have never had, I say have, I say haven't. I cannot recall this ever being an issue, especially the way today's schools are set up. You know, you have people in the class with all this stuff. Could be a diet counselor, could be a special ed teacher, could be a speech, you know, speech teacher. Kids are coming and going all the time. Where I cannot recall an incident where this is a combination where like all of a sudden somebody's getting labeled because they're going down to this classroom. Space can be an issue with any building, you know, where several classes, several rooms can be multi-use.
Yeah.
You know, if you were to sound like an occupancy right here, you know, most likely the man does not need for us to have this office five days a week. Yeah, and maybe the highest will maybe onto more frequently. But it's being used for something else. It's not exclusive to Creative Health. So there's not, I have not come across a stigma of like, okay, they're going down to Creative Health.
Right, there's no big neon sign of, it's there be, there be, it's very, it's again confidential. The room is often used for other things when we're not there. And you'd be surprised at how many kids talk amongst themselves anyway and bring, bring somebody else in with them. You know, they're going here and they can help you too. You'd be surprised, we have that in another school.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for the public?
Would you be doing group therapy with parents and students in a school setting?
We would not be doing the group therapy with the parents in the setting, but we could certainly lead with the parents, with the child. We wouldn't do the group with the parents.
It's funny about the security, you're saying that.
Yeah, we would not be doing multiple families, you know, multiple families at the same time. Okay, we would be including the parents and the child, we can include that. But we would not include a group of parents and a group of children. But we would not include the group of parents and a group of children. And because we also have the office at Potts, right here at Birdsboro, that's another option to, if we need to meet with the families, that is another option that we can do.
Will we still have a school psychologist?
Yeah, they're not replacing any school personnel. This is on, this is additional. Like they said, a lot of our families and students are already utilizing their services. And currently, they have to leave. And either, and a lot of times, they're probably not coming back. Because once you're out, you know, you're out. So this way, the service can be used and they get to see the child in their setting. And one question I have, and last one. At any point, would you intervene if a student was having an issue live in person at school? A number of times during the day, there are blowups at school with students. Would you ever go in to assist in that type of situation?
That's a real tough one, because they're going to have to, they're going to have to be clients of ours. But that does not mean that if there is a situation going on, that we're going to turn our back toward. No different than if I saw a situation going on in my waiting room, and I, you know, that are not our clients, I would not turn my back on that. Depending on the severity of the situation, we would have to address obviously the immediate need of what's going on. We're not going to walk away from children getting hurt or staff in danger because they're not our, you know, they're not ours. We'll deal with that later.
Thank you.
One more question, sorry. And how easily can this be terminated if it's not mutually beneficial arrangement, 30 days? Is it a one-year deal? What if we needed the space?
We don't have any agreement yet.
Exactly, what would the agreement be?
We don't have one yet. We're just, I'm bringing him here to discuss and answer questions.
What would you expect it to be? When it's signed with other schools?
To be quite honest, we've never had that happen.
You go to year, like it runs the course every year, school year?
We've had, yeah.
Contract?
We've never had, because it's not a written contract. What we do is we have to stay come out and license the site in regards to providing the service in that site. To answer your question, we've never had that happen. So I couldn't give you a right or wrong answer. Space has always been found in certain places, you know, the buildings that we've currently been in. We've always been able to come up with a space. There have been times, and the only thing that I would, you know, that I would expect is I just expect all of a day, look, this is working out, this isn't working. You know, we're here to provide a service for the community.
So I guess Mr. Subers, when you draft up the contract, if there's any kind of concerns, we would put some type of separation clause in there, and how we could separate if we chose to, for whatever reason.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
If you, Ms. Hicks and Ms. McGee, if you would please sign in at the podium. Okay, under finance, of course, you have a course and credit approvals. Later on this month, we'll have a motion to approve the Berks County Intermediate Unit Basic Services Budget. And then there's a motion to renumber Policy 626 Finances to 627. Sure you're aware of that. Is there any board questions on finance? Or Mr. Rathkeb, is there anything you wish to add?
Just any questions, if there's a I U, you know, a little notebook there. Let's see that the 2017-18 cost, our figure is $37,663 and $88,000. A $598 increase or a 1.6% increase from last year. See that's, countywide, and then we divide it up by, you know, each district. And part of that is based on our ratio and, and our increase in the area.
Any board, any other board comments, questions? Any public comment on finance? Seeing none, we'll move to presentations by board members. Mr. Martino, Secretary's Correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Lefebvre. Two pieces of correspondence, both of them go back a little ways. On December 21st, 2016, we received a letter to the Music Boosters stating, "To whom to make concern in connection with the Harvey Hubbell Foundation's Dollars for Doers Program? Please find enclosed check number 9112 and the amount of $3,000 in recognition of the volunteer efforts of Michael Wolfe. Sincerely, by Pat Zambrello, the Foundation Administrator." And on January 23rd of this year, we received correspondence saying, "Mr. Wolfe, I would like this email read at your next meeting and included in the board minutes. The concept of a community school sounds very nice at first blush. What will cost Daniel Boone's school system? Closing Birdsboro is supposed to be a cost-saving measure. If the community school costs one penny, the board is redigging on their decision and their responsibility. This is nothing more than bound to the pressure of a small minority of Daniel Boone residents. Why not community schools in Amity, Douglasville, or Monocacy? The only way this should even be considered is if it's a self-funded private school." And that was sent by Charlie Dry.
On my piece, the foundation was started, and this is actually volunteer, my volunteer hours from going back to 2015. So it just took a little while for the new foundation to.
I'm having some trouble?
To recognize my hours. But I would encourage everybody, if your company has a foundation that, even if it's a matching dollar-for-dollar, it's well worth, you know, worth the time. Obviously, I wish that foundation would have been up and running 10 years ago. I probably could have got $30,000 for the Music Boosters for all the hours we put in over that timeframe. But 40 hours was pretty easy, pretty easily attained. So in my case, it was something I was doing already, so it went to a good cause. But if there is something like that where you know of, or the company, your spouse's company, offers something like that, donations of kind, take advantage of it. Okay, Berks County Intermediate Unit Report, Mr. Rathkeb.
This is what we got, a good chunk of our vehicles going over the budget. Obviously, a lot of the budget comes from the state and, and some of the local county, county assessment. And, and part of our discussion, which I think we're having later on today, was, obviously, the I U is involved with the state as far as taxes go. And there was a discussion in countywide with the Proposition 76 at Berks County. So I think we do have discussions later on that topic. So that was, that was the main thing.
Any board questions with Mr. Rathkeb? All right, for the Career and Technology Board Report, I actually substituted for Ms. Tordowski. Was actually a really good meeting. Again, just like the I U, they focused on the Career and Technology Budget. The CTC budget is increasing in an expected 1.45%, which is the lowest increase in the last 10 years, and has continued to trend downward over the last couple of years. Based on comments, including I'm sure Mr. Rathkeb's comment through Mrs. Tordowski, they committed a little bit more money this year from the reserve fund for fund balance for Peasars and the like. So you should be very.
Remember for that, yes.
Yes. One significant development was the bonds that were pulled for the reconstruction of both Career and Technology Centers in 1999 are about to expire at the end of next year's school year. So what they're envisioning is, they're going to be paid off next June of '18. The CTC is proposing that 25% of whatever that payment was, of the bond payment, be continued for capital projects going forward through the 2027 to 2028 school year. The CTC doesn't plan any large expansion projects. It's not entertaining the need for additional bonds in the future. They believe with that money, they can fund their renovations and program improvements and additions from that money. Now, one thing that's different, now, we, our budget for how much we get charged for the CTC is based on percentage of our student population. That won't be the case. It'll be, the real estate value of the 16 districts, and what percentage that is, will make up what percentage of that bond, of that 25% we're going to be paying going forward. So our share, I don't know how, we haven't shared the numbers as far as what the number would look like. Obviously, it's going to be a much lower number, since the bonds are going to be paid off. But what percentage of that 25% Daniel Boone will be responsible has yet to be determined. And that was really about the extent of the meeting. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay. There's no student government legislative report, Mr. Martino?
Yes, Mr. Martino. On the national front, on February 7th, Betsy DeVos was confirmed by the United States Senate, the Secretary of Education, by the narrowest margin in history, with Vice President Pence creating a 50-50 tie vote. I believe we'll soon see many positive changes in the way education's governed nationwide, and perhaps a change in the Commonwealth standards. In the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on February 7th, also Governor Wolfe made his 2017-18 budget address. It basically calls for $2 billion in efficiencies and $1 billion in increased taxes, all needed to close an anticipated budget gap. He made no mention of House Bill, Senate Bill 76, the Property Tax Independence Act. The highlights of the governor's proposal are a $100 million increase in basic ed funding and a $25 million increase for special ed, but a $50 million cut to transportation for a net increase of only $75 million. The Senate has closely considered the proposal as a starting point and will begin working on their version of the budget early March. One thing I did not write down, but a part of his proposal for increased revenue is to charge individuals in areas without a local police force $25 a day to fund the state police. And lastly, locally, a teacher from Twin Valley School District has joined other teachers in filing a lawsuit regarding the fundraising right to work issue in the hopes of not being forced to levy union dues. That's all for the legislative report.
Thank you, Mr. Martino.
I have a question. I read something about paycheck protection and the collection of union dues. Is that, have you been satisfied with the situation? Has something, is it moving, is it shut down?
There was a bill in the State Senate to not be able to use union funds for political purposes. That's already not, I don't believe they're allowed to already, so. I don't know that that's an issue. And I don't know that anything's passed. It's just, I believe it's just in the Senate.
Okay, I also wanted to add that there was a bill introduced to abolish the Federal Department of that by Representative Massey. Is that going on?
Yeah, the only problem with that, Mrs. Blake, is it's a one-sentence bill that just says the Department of Education should be abolished in 2018 or something to that effect. Yeah, very simple.
I see that's a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Is there any public comment on board reports?
Mr. Wolfe, we have a student representative here tonight. I've forgotten about the student.
Okay, hi Jonathan.
So tomorrow is the Angela Hall Drive at St. Lynn High School. So if any member of the community or any member of the board is willing to donate, that would be great. I will personally be donating, so we'll see you there. Also, winter sports are starting to come to a close. Playoff seasons are in progress. Sadly, most of the teams have made it to the playoffs, but spring sports should be coming up pretty soon. Hopefully, there's better performances than then. Scheduling is very well on its way. It started earlier this year, so the plan is to have a rough schedule of five to 18 years of students who will now have four, so appropriate, well-classed facilities. There won't be any issues with scheduling concepts or anything. The quarter ended last month, and so now we're starting the new semester and the quarter. And any student that has any issues that possibly might pass, we have to contact it. And later this week, there will be the parent conference meeting on Thursday evening. And we heard the Fastlane students, who are well on the art show, and we should attend it, if they were. And Suits is happening this year again under Mrs. Bulmer. And that will be occurring in March, March or November days. And also Mr. Booth, who also has a curse, as is High School Musical, which will be in April.
Thank you, Mr. Coaksen. All right, is there any public comment on presentations? Seeing none. There's a number of personnel items on number nine. I did send out in response to a question today, and I'll say Mr. Cocke will trip to the microphone. There, we did double-check, Mr. Rena and Mr. McCord do not have any relationship with the Blue Rocks baseball organization. So that question for us, though, been on the board a number of years, we already asked that question.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Item number nine, A2. Class A designer. Just curious what grade that was?
Some, nine A, is that right?
Yeah, decision fast one.
That was, I want to say, fourth grade, fourth grade.
Fourth grade? And is there going to be a replacement for her?
Yes.
Okay. We're bringing someone in new, or what are we doing in the interim?
I would say we have, I can't say for sure. I would say we have a sub from Precision HR, a subservice, and then we would hire another A. Just like we would for any other absence.
Well, I just, I only ask because a fourth grade was tight, we'll say, with Stanford as it was. So I just wanted to know if we were pulling an A from another grade or another, to fill the gap? Or were we going without until that person replaces?
No, we would have a sub. A sub coming.
Any other questions on personnel items? Public comment?
Mr. Wolfe, I'm, no, I'm sorry. I was looking for the microphone to come on. Under Administrator, the motion to recruit a creation of a position titled Corrective Operations. I just had a personnel committee last week, and it stated that this job would be posted and awarded to the best qualified person. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, I just thought that was said, but there was no public error and very few board members.
It's feedback.
All right, I have a question on the, thank you, Mr. Rathkeb. It's a symbol, I'm not supposed to talk, that's what it is. No, on the Director of Operations job description, Mr. Wolfe and I had a conversation, because the personnel committee is pretty new, this is something we talked about in the committee as well. Much like the policy committee, my understanding is. Much like the Policy Committee, my understanding is that the new job descriptions should come up to the Board, just as new policies come up through the Board, and that is the Board itself, and not necessarily go through an ad hoc committee. However, we are going to be looking at our next meeting at all administrative job descriptions. So, I did think after looking at the agenda, the draft agenda, putting together, that maybe it would make sense, instead of if we're going to approve this job description at the end of the month, I'll need to look at it again a week later in Personnel. If we could review this in Personnel, I wouldn't want this to be the standard operating procedure or anything, just because we are looking at the entire administration, all the job descriptions. If we could push this until next month to vote, and in the Personnel Committee is looking over the job description and to see if there's anything, if there's any other job descriptions or anything, anything duplicate, unless it's surgeon.
The, okay, this was vetted through the Facilities Committee, and...
Well, I don't know that we discussed the actual description. I mean, we sort of did, but I didn't think we, well, I don't want to...
Well, the only, the issue is that this position needs to be posted and filled, so that training can begin, because we're bringing transportation in-house. So, the closer we get to the end of the year, it becomes more difficult.
Well, I mean, the thing I'm thinking is, if we're going to review it in the committee, no matter what, we can review it in all administrative positions, and I just think it would be terrible if we had some tweaks we want to make, and all of a sudden the job description is already out there. I don't know how long it takes to hire somebody, but perhaps we can get the job advertised and put up this preliminary description, and we wouldn't be making any wholesale changes, I can't imagine. But I'm just thinking it would be nice for Personnel Committee, that Jeff will go over it, just to see how it fits in the grand scheme of things, proposed and carried.
I'm going to repeat my dissatisfaction with this, because, number one, I feel that the transportation piece, being also part of the facilities piece, the big, our large-scale projects go on in the summertime, you know, late, as soon as school is over. Coincidentally, that's also the time when a lot of the bus schedules are being finalized and done through the summer. So, my concern is, and has been, you know, we have yet to be supplied with the three maintenance people that are qualified by GCA to handle independently the maintenance needs of the building. And I feel like that's going to be, you know, this year we have, and you'll see later in the agenda, we have a number of large-scale projects going to be kicked off after the end of the school year, and I feel that, in my personal opinion, I just feel that we're setting ourselves up and that person up for failure, because the conflicting amount of responsibilities going on at the same time. I just, that's just my feeling on it.
So, do you think the committee should look at it a little bit more?
I think it should be discussed.
If you want to understand what Mr. Wolf's saying, this was discussed briefly at the agenda meeting last Thursday, and there was some disagreement over the issue Mr. Wolf's stating, in that this year, the bus routes will actually still be done by Ron Smith, who works for New Route, along with our person. And I think then and only then will we know how much time is actually involved with our computer systems, et cetera. So, we would have time between now and the summer of 2018 to determine if we need to remove that from this description or not. Just my thought.
The Facilities Committee, I think, we did, I think, email out the agenda. I don't know that we discussed it in depth, and I, I'd say, one of the things that I believe will be a duplicate with the Assistant Business Manager's job description, there's something about transportation, so that may need to come out of that, if it's being put, so there are, there are going to be tweaks to job descriptions. I mean, I would be, and I don't know whether this is our salary range, is there, you know, I mean, we're creating a position, but do we have, you know, I don't, I don't know if we have all that information yet, so.
And that is a great question. For the jobs that are posted, we need to know what's happening.
Can I request then that we do not vote on this in the voting meeting?
Well, let's everybody's, before you and I decide, what's everyone else's feeling on it?
I prefer to discuss it all the more, I think, just make sure we know what we're doing, and what the salary is, like what...
I'd want to, I want to discuss it, because I think there's too much question.
Mrs. Bykes, I see you're checking, all right, that's at least five, right? Okay. Okay. So, plan is to pull it from the voting meeting. When will it be discussed, then?
It will be discussed at the next Personnel Committee meeting, which is on the March in between, oh, it's in between the Committee of the Whole and the Voting Meeting, March 13.
Wait, did you say, oh, so that's Committee of the Whole?
Been the 20th then, excuse me. That's 50-50 shot.
So, your CNI is first, and then Personnel follows?
Right. CNI starts at 5:30, Personnel starts at, I believe, 5:30.
So, then the recommendation would be made from your committee, so we could vote on the end of March?
Yes.
You know, because we're, we are pushing back that timeframe that we have overlap for training to occur, so I mean, we just have to make sure that's, that's really our...
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's February. I'm jumping it. Yeah. Oh, we know, we already met this, we already met that February. We had to be early because of the holidays next week. Normally, we wouldn't be here.
Well, they're in session, so we don't have another meeting.
We don't have another meeting, I don't know about that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on personnel items?
There is, oh, I mean, that is section of personnel, because I believe there's a section under there in the Personnel Committee, yes. We have Personnel, and we have Personnel Committee. Yeah, so I'll save my report today.
Okay, so under 10 programs, we each had the head count statistics, the student monthly enrollment comparison. Looks like we have some trips to approve. The MOU between Alvernia University and Daniel Boone, I read through it, this is, they're going to give us lower tuition for allowing their students to...
Lower tuition for our staff, and they will remove the application fee of $100, and if we get enough people, they're actually, they will actually teach a class on our campus if we wanted to. Or anyone, any Daniel Boone employee.
Okay, the other one they approved, the participation at Penn State Berks Homework Hotline. Can you tell me a little bit about, about that?
That's for math from Penn State Berks. So, what we would do is, if agreed upon, we would give them our textbooks, well, a copy of each, and if students had a problem, sixth grade through 12, could call into this help line and get help with the homework, but they would not get answers, they just process on how to do the work. If they have a test, they could scan and send to this group, and they could help them talk through the test, how they did and what they did wrong. It's a tutoring service. That's pretty successful, and there's no charge.
Is that in practice, anything else around here, any...
I believe Exeter is doing it right now, and I believe Quittstown also.
Will there be a way to determine, can they run a report saying how many Daniel Boone students called in?
Yes.
This seems like a pretty high resource.
They can do that, take a look at that, also by class.
Any public comment?
I have public comment on the actual...
You want to, all right, you want to come up here and...
Shane Cockle, returning back to town, bro. In regards to this report and Mr. Rena, the agreement, which is right here in his own words, is my, my family and I purchased a beach house over the winter. My summer will consist of me living out of state. As per the agreement I made when I returned, I am no longer coaching anything, because I'm not a coach anything, except Daniel Boone baseball. This is the team I want to coach now and the future, and I will do nothing to jeopardize it. Four months later, he is with the owner of the Blue Rocks at Grand Slam, the coaches of the Blue Rocks Grand Slam, coaching a travel team down to the Carpenter's Cup, and she can sit there and shake her head, no, all she wants, I'm right in front of you.
I know, we've been...
Don't try to belittle me with this. Here's the copy, right here.
We also talk to parents.
Okay, oh, yeah, talk to the parents who their kids are on the Blue Rocks, that's fine. His agreement was he's not supposed to be coaching anything. Four months later, he's coaching, okay? They're practicing at Grand Slam, he says he has nothing to do with Grand Slam. Two years in a row, and I thought, you know what, you guys don't want to listen, okay? This is why Berks Grove questions what you're doing, this is why Union Township questions what you're doing, because you know what, you do what you want to do, regardless of agreements that you have with people, and they break them. And their word means nothing, and your word means nothing. That was the agreement, okay? Two years in a row. So, what does he do this year? He brings in John Rena, okay? John Rena is specifically tied with Blue Rocks. Last year, he coached, okay? The season didn't start yet. So, as far as everyone's concerned, he is still at Blue Rocks. Now, if you're doing this, which is letting these coaches do whatever they want to, because the owner of the Grand Slam at Blue Rocks works for the school district, just let me know, and I'll just drop it. If you don't care about what's happening on your field, just say, you know what, Shane, we don't care, we don't care what the agreements are, as long as they get what they want, we will just turn our, turn our head and say, oh, he's not on Blue Rocks. The agreement was, no teams, okay? He said he will have no association with the Blue Rocks Grand Slam. Four months later, he's on their coaching staff, coaching the Carpenter Cup.
How many years ago was this? Because I might...
2014, 2015, 2016.
So, he...
And what you have to do, is...
Well, I just want to know, no, I...
Print it right there. Go ahead.
Can you, all right, can you send us that article?
I will send you everything I have.
Because that was the first, when we, when I saw his name as Mr. Rena, that's the first question we asked, and, you know, we're, we asked the administration, the administration asked directly, they said, he said no, or it was reported back to me that there was no affiliation there, that he was not coaching, not affiliated. So, we're taking, we're taking the administration at the word. I mean, is there, if there's something else that...
I mean, I've done, I've done all this work, and I sent all this information, and what they do is they talk to parents that are playing baseball. They don't want to see the coaches leave, because their, their kids are the ones playing the sport.
Right. And we, we made a decision on the Board that we were not going to allow that relationship to continue, because it felt to the students that they were pressured to join this team in order to be placed into high school teams. So, I share your that concern, and that was the first question. When I seen these two names, you know, because I think there's such a couple of this have been on the Board long enough to remember this.
Did he break this promise in 2014? As the state couple said? Did we, we investigated it at that time. I can show you the emails, because I went through them this afternoon, and I'll send them out to you guys tomorrow. What did you find out? Did he or did he not? They talked to parents that said that he was not at the Carpenter Cup. Oh, they said he wasn't there.
Mr. Cockle, I don't know if this satisfies you, but we discussed this very briefly the other day, and my understanding is for Mr. Harris and Mr. McKnight, to make sure Mr. Smith understands that if there's any indication that either one of these gentlemen are coaching somewhere else, they're gone.
Why, Mr. Smith is aware of the expectation?
Well, why would the running eagle print them as coaches?
I didn't, I didn't see the running eagle.
I sent, I, yes. And it says, 2015, he coached when...
No, I'm talking about this now.
I'm doing a Google search today, and I found nothing.
I know at least, I know at one link.
The agreement was back in 2014, 15. He broke it then, he broke it last year also.
And I believe in...
And I'm sure this year, we'll be breaking it again, because he got away with it two years in a row.
I believe at the time, we also called Blue Rocks and asked them to take it down from the website, because he wasn't coaching. I mean, we did go through an investigation, and last year, we didn't let, I think it was last year, we didn't let Rena coach, because he was still involved.
Okay, so if he was still coaching as of May of last year, during baseball season, okay, it's like asking the football coach, are you still coaching football? Well, no. I, well, that's because the season's not till this coming year.
I said, I don't know if this satisfies you, but if he breaks the agreement this year, either one of them, they're gone.
We are committed to not having that arrangement, I can assure you of that. At least some of us are. We pulled John Rena off as a coach, like, four days before the first dame, two years ago, because we said we didn't want him. I don't, what you want is, you want the flame fire, and you want a new coach. That's really what you want.
No.
No, I think it's clear.
It was, let me, let me...
He's been here for four years.
Here is the situation, when you give your word...
You took him this year, and us now.
I would bring in, I'll bring in the newspaper ads, the newspaper, where it's specifically, you, they don't just come up with names, it's McCord, Jason McCord, Daniel Boone, contact them at Daniel Boone McCord, and along with it is the coach of the, the owner of the Blue Rocks, and the other coach of the Blue Rocks. That was four months after he made that promise that he wasn't going to, to have any time.
Let's go forward, let's see if he breaks the agreement this year.
Excuse me, I have a question. When a coach joins the staff and we hire him, do they have to sign an agreement or a contract? What are the rules there?
They didn't have that at the time.
Well, why don't we have it going forward? We don't have it now.
We have, I think we do, we...
Agreement, agreement.
I think we put a new policy in place that, I think we rushed this through...
I'm just saying, there should be an agreement. If you're going, if you're going to work for the Daniel Boone School District, there should be some kind of contract or employment agreement. We should put a line in that agreement saying that you only work in your supporting field for the Daniel Boone School District. They sign it, we sign the legal document, we'll tell you.
Not to be laborious, Mr. Cockle, but you just said you don't want to be replaced.
It's not.
That's seemingly the same thing.
No. The problem is, he should be removed, okay? Because the simple fact of the original agreement.
But that's arguable.
Not just one year.
That's arguable. Just there was an investigation, that's arguable. This is the worst thing ever. But we went through this two years ago, we literally... You're saying the opposite, right?
She's saying they ask the parents.
No, I, I will forward to the emails, the... Let's just go forward. Just make sure, let's, let's as short as we can, but we are not... Two years ago, when this email, when Shane brought it up, we went through it, and we decided that he wasn't coaching for Blue Rocks, that John Rena could not coach for Daniel Boone. We've done the diligence, we're not trying to... So, I'd like to go forward, not backward. I think we need to go forward.
The frustrating thing is, I keep bringing proof, and then we have this saying, oh, we talked to parents. Here's proof, here's the running eagle printing him as a coach.
Send it to us.
I will send it to you.
It's from three, from three years. Is there some...
There was, there was, their website, their website actually did list him as a coach, even after he was not a coach. We had to call them, and they took it down.
Somebody called them, and they took it down. I was the one who found it, it was infuriating, but they assured me that he wasn't on state. We have to go forward from here, we assure you that we are beyond doing this.
Mr. Cockle, I said this wasn't going to satisfy you, but we're going to... but we're going to hire these two people for this year. And if we find out that coaching elsewhere, they'll be terminated instantly.
I agree.
But we're not going to go back to 14, 15, 16.
Thank you.
I will still send you the newspaper. One final thought of thought is, we teach respect, sportsmanship, and honesty. And when you have a coach who's in charge of these students breaking that word of their word to the administration and the school board, it puts all those kids in jeopardy. You just lie.
Mr. Cockle, you're saying that is a fact, and it's arguable. Isn't that what you're saying, Mrs. Tardowski? But that is arguable. He broke his word or not. You can't keep saying that.
She talked to the parents.
You can't keep saying that. It's arguable.
Are you talking to her or me?
Both of you.
I'm not going to say I'm done. I'm not going to retract. I'm not saying...
Can we move forward? Mr. Cockle, thank you. Can we just move forward?
I think we'll end it this way. The board is committed that these coaches are hired with the stipulation that they have no affiliation with this traveling baseball team. If that is found to be contrary, Mr. Harris will take the appropriate steps to make sure they're not coaching. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Cockle. Okay. Is there any other public comment? Okay, moving to curriculum instruction.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. We had a very brief CNI meeting at the beginning of this month. First up, we have foreign language update from the administration. There are efforts in place for next year to have a... They're adopting new standards for the foreign language department, specifically in Spanish. And that's being directed by Mr. Hurley in conjunction with Mr. McMillan and the Spanish-speaking foreign language departments. We are going to have a Chapter 339 presentation from the guidance department coming up sometime in the spring. Bring more information at that time. We had a discussion. Mr. Martino had brought up a previous board meeting career with the parents from the high school. And we had a discussion about that. And that'll be continued topic of discussion. And then finally, we ended by discussing the use of syllabi at the high school level. And that will also be a continued topic of discussion. That's all I have on the CNI front. However, I attended, and Mrs. Blyth also attended along with our administrators and teachers from the high school, a visit to Spring Theory Charter School in Philadelphia to see the iPads in the classroom. And I guess we'll have time to discuss this later, but I just thought I was very thankful for the administration for offering standing meditation for members. I thought it was very interesting to see it in practice. It's not really analogous, I don't think, to how we'd be using Daniel Boone necessarily. But I'm glad that we were able to see that. But I don't know, I'm sure when it comes time to discuss the one-to-one initiative more if anybody has any questions about this, I'd be happy to be a resource. And what I saw in through Mrs. Blyth is in the administration as well. I thought that would be a good time to mention here at the CNI. And that's it.
Your next meeting?
Next meeting will be on March 20th. Yeah, it's a little bit more than a month away. We have to meet, like I said earlier, early this month because of the upcoming holiday.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Curtis. Mr. Martino, you added item C for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I just have a question for our administrators. Been on the board over three years and never thought to ask us before. But with our kindergarteners coming into the Pledge of Allegiance, it made me think, do the students at the high school, middle school, and other elementary schools start the day with the Pledge of Allegiance? High school? In all the classes? Good. Okay, I just made me think with the officers. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on curriculum instruction? Seeing none, the extracurricular committee?
Okay, Mr. Wolf, we had our first meeting tonight on that. Basically, we... Conversation obviously encompasses sports, extracurriculars, clubs. So the impetus for this, for the committee was, several years ago, the district made the decisions, kind of... A few decisions were made first. We decided to add keys to several of our clubs' sports. We also, at the time, had banned going to an extracurricular status as opposed to a code curricular status. So as a parent, you know, over the years, I've kind of seen our ban for that number. I've seen our sports teams certainly had some success, but certainly compared to the past, we've had some challenges. So I thought it was a good time to kind of focus committee and kind of review where as a district we want to be. And whether that's for funding the items or getting partial funding, or maybe, as in the past, we've had discussions about totally getting rid of the program. I think the way we're looking at it is, we directed... Outcome of this meeting was, we've asked the administrator to go back and come up with his model of what a fully funded sports program would look like to take some of the stress off of all the continuous fundraising we do in the district, as well as potentially looking at our fee structure there and how we're going to... We've also asked the high school to go back and look at if we want to make that code curricular again and how that would look. And we're also looking at getting more drilled down in our clubs to see what our actual number is on there. So I think the overall sentiment, I think we all agree. And I think we want our sports teams, our bands. You know, it's a good area for our kids to learn a lot of good skills with discipline, character, learning to work as a team. It's a lot of skills that sometimes don't get in classrooms. So we'll see what the committee comes up with, and whether we can make some good recommendations for making these programs a little better here at the end. I think with your parents, who know it's going to struggle some time over the last several years. So we'll see what the total outcome is, what the cost is. Obviously, it's the driver. I hope we don't come back with a recommendation to reward it makes some sense. Our next meeting will be March 13th at 5:15 before the facilities committee.
Any questions for Mr. Tardowski? Public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to facilities committee. Mrs. Tardowski?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. The facilities committee met on the 6th of February. And our main discussion was capital needs and five-year capital budget. We did choose some items that's listed that I think should make Mr. McKnight happy, that were recommended for approval to be done this summer. The majority of them should be able to be done in the 2016-17 budget year, with the exception of sidewalks. So we played a little bit with the five-year plan, and we kind of moved some things around so that we could get some items that can be completed in this fiscal cycle. And our recommendation currently is, as you can see, C through H, the high school courtyard doors, the amount of $40,000. The IT server room at the high school, the installation of the new AC system at $13,000. The sidewalk was $110,000 at the high school. That would not be completed before the end of June. But they would like to get that done this summer. And then the high school restroom renovation, the amount of $82,000. And the high school door rekeying, an amount of $5,000. With the overall five-year budget, most of the needs that were identified can be funded if we continue to put that half a million dollars a year aside into the capital funds. So I mean, that'll be really a key of the board and finance committee to decide if they're willing to move that money every year. But if they do, it looks like we can kind of stay on top of the improvement needs. So he's going to rework the five-year budget with the... Or plan with the moving things out that we couldn't get done this year. And we'll bring that back next month, and then probably share that with the whole board. We also are recommending approval of the disposition of the two unneeded vehicles, a 2001 Chevy truck, I believe it was, and a '92 Chevy van, or maybe it's vice versa. And then we are also recommending approval of the acceptance of donation of fitness equipment from the Living Factor, and an acceptance of a check in the amount of $830 from the Blazer Foundation for the best... If you have any questions on the news, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
I did have a comment. I want to thank Mr. Small and Mr. Blankenbiller for putting that five-year budget together. I thought that was very well done as far as... You could see exactly what our fund balance is if we continue to insert that $500 into that budget.
$500,000.
$500,000, excuse me.
Somebody will jump on that.
Yeah, $500,000 into that budget, how we can, you know, manage our projects. And there is... You could see the logic of moving a certain amount of that $500,000 into, what I understand, is a separate project improvement account, which will pay for the replacement of the high school turf. So it's not going to be a one-year, you know, savings project like the high school roof had. That $500,000 went right away as soon as we got it. So that there is a savings plan in order to replace that. So it is very helpful. It mimics our five-year budget model, so you can see the fund balance remaining at the end of the year each year. And I think Mr. Small was going to, along with Mr. Blankenbiller, move the project in the appropriate years. And it allows you to see what the district can afford and, you know, prioritize what things get done. So it is very powerful, and I want to thank them for their hard work on that. Any other questions for Mrs. Tardowski? I do have additional items. The Coral Reef Project and the POs. And Mr. Martino, you want to speak to those two items?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. I titled it Coral Reef Project. I should have called it Coral Reef Fiasco. After the personnel committee meeting, I stopped at the facilities committee meeting. And information was lacking in the facilities meeting, but after extensive research, I was able to ascertain the following data. The original project, the original Coral Reef project, it was approved by the board, included one tank we donated by Rosemont College. That was the project. Somehow, we got up to three tanks. And nobody at the facilities meeting knew how we got up to three tanks. Does anybody know how we got up to three tanks from the one that was approved? The original cost was a one-time expense of $650 to $1,500 to launch the program, and an annual maintenance cost of approximately $700. Yet a year and a half later, we just spent nearly $10,000 for electrical work without a prior approved purchase order. And I'll get to the purchase orders in a minute, but I think we're going to start taking corrective action because this keeps happening over and over and over. The $10,000 probably was necessary because, and this is where I say fiasco, we had extension cords, we had power strips plugged into power strips. We were looking at a much potential fire hazard. Of course, had we stuck to the one tank that was approved, we might not have needed all these power cords and extension cords. So we can't keep doing things that promise zero to minimal cost, only to find out later we're going to up for a lot more money. And we do this over and over. And there was talk about a grant. There's no record of a grant being allocated to us for a Coral Reef project. And this segues right into purchase orders and donations. Back when I was board president, Mr. Harley was the acting superintendent. Corrective action was needed for an administrator who made purchases without prior approval. Since then, multiple instructions have been sent out stating that administrators do not have the authority to spend any money without an approved purchase order. And I asked Mr. Small this question before the meeting. Are the principals required to submit a purchase order for approval before buying something evil at funds from their individual school budget? And yes, they are. Are there any administrators who don't understand the requirement for a purchase order? Because, Mr. Harris, this can't keep happening. Regarding donations, we just received exercise equipment and spent $300 to transport it without board approval. And now we want to spend another $2,000 to erect a fence. So that's $2,300 for equipment that the board hasn't approved the donation yet. And I'll ask the administrators the same question. Donations of any kind have to be approved by the board before being accepted. Not after, not during, before. So, Mr. Harris, please ensure that the administrator is not in attendance or made aware of the proper use of purchase orders and donations. Again, please. Thank you.
Was the $10,000 in electrical work was specifically to manage the power needs for the tanks?
Worse than that, Mr. Scott. The contractor was told, "Here, fix all this." And was given no specific... There was no instruction as to what exactly needed to be done.
So what exactly did we get for the $10,000?
I believe when they went with powering for that, they uncovered other problems. So it was a rolling...
If I remember the service...
It was a snowballing issue.
The nearest service wasn't large enough, and it had, like, another panel had to be augmented? Mr. Blankenbiller, can you add any detail?
I can tell you exactly what happened. Initially, we were told the power had to be for one tank with the possible expansion of three tanks. So that's where the three tanks came in. Many months ago, you know, I remember in a conversation, I can't remember where, there was a grant to pay for the work. And I was instructed during those conversations that when the electrical work was needed, they carry what we have the grant for. While we were looking in the classroom that they're using above the ceiling, we found many issues above the ceiling of old work that was not safe. We attempted to use the existing electrical service in that classroom for the tanks, and we're not able to due to age and just due to lack of capacity. We then proceeded to look in the hallway across the mechanical room across the hallway at those electrical panels. There again, due to age and due to capacity, we were not able to use those. We then looked at the next nearest mechanical space, which is the mechanical room down by A4, I believe it is, where the pumps and everything are. We proceeded to look in the switchgear there[1743.52] We proceeded to look in the switchgear there to see what spaces were available, and we found that the previous transformer from the modulars was still connected, and the wires were just cut off in the box and not safe off. So, contractor had to thoroughly disconnect, properly disconnect that transformer, move it out of the way. So, we did many repairs for safety reasons during this, during this process. So, we probably spent, probably had three days with two guys over that week and a half span of doing the work and hours of just remedying issues that were above the ceiling that were unsafe. So, I, you know, the work was, the work was done by the contractor, because I remember, and I honestly can't remember who told me this, but I remember that there was a grant to be paid for. This conversation, this grant, I remember, this Coral Reef has been a year and a half project, it's been discussed. So, I honestly don't remember, you know, when, when the conversation happened. But I emphatically remember that I was told, when the electrical work was needed to be done, take care of it, because we have a grant to pay for it. You know, I...
I think, if I, part of the issue too, to me, I think, were the tanks in place before the electrical work was done?
Right.
To me, that's the part before the, like, if we knew we had tanks coming in, and we needed electrical upgrades, to me, you would do the upgrades and then plug the tanks in and set them up. You don't plug the tanks in, set the stuff up, have electrical cords running all over the place, and now you got to do electrical. Like, I just think, we need to, in my opinion, we should, the project was a little bit backwards. I don't know. I just think you need to figure out what you need before you start the project.
Well, I think the assumption was a fifteen hundred dollar startup was going to include whatever was needed to get it running.
The other part is, if and when they get these additional tanks, the service in the classroom now is prepared for it. So, there will be minimal cost to hook up these additional, additional tanks because the panel is there. We were able to procure a used electrical panel, a used transformer to provide the service. It was, it was part of another project that they had bought, and they had in their warehouse. The good part for us was, you know, we have a two thousand dollar transformer for like a thousand dollars. So, we have a lot of parts that were only used for a month's of temporary service that we had had, had a much reduced cost. And everything that was done was done solely for safety. You know, I walked in, and like I said, there were, there were extension cords and power strips, so a lot of things walked in. I was told they are critical, that if one thing goes down, this coral dies, so we couldn't have this happen. I mean, we had, you know, three or four of them put within the one, one power strip, the power strip mills, you'd lose a month's worth of work.
I have two questions for Mr. Small. Had there been a grant, which there's no record of, that I could find, would you not still need a purchase order?
Yes.
And had this become a safety issue, could not a phone call have been made saying, "A purchase order is coming"?
Yes, one directive that went out from Mr. Harris last year indicated that. One of the directives of the administration, "For purchase orders, in the event of emergency, twenty-four hours notification. Get the work done within twenty-four hours notice with the PO."
Thank you.
Can you see, just for clarification, is it accurate to say that the work that ended up being done was done for safety reasons as opposed to, to support the tanks themselves, and you just discovered it because you thought there was an issue that needed to be addressed with the tanks, and that's why you were in the ceiling in the first place?
We, we figured we could use what was in that room for the tanks, and we found out we could not, so we started to research other avenues.
And that became a safety issue?
And it just, it, it, it snowballed.
So, the, my point is that the expenditure wasn't really to support the tanks.
No.
The expenditure was. In figuring out how you were going to support the additional tanks, you realized that there was some unsafe electrical work in the ceiling that needed to be addressed.
Correct.
For that, the proper characterization of what happened.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on that, and another question. From my recollection of the high school, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but what was happening in the ceilings is that you had extension cords going, and they were able to support different stations from above instead of having extension cords going across the floor. Is that right? What was the issue with the ceiling?
With this classroom?
Yes.
There were just previous projects that people had, previous wiring that was just hanging all over the place. Disconnected, some of it hanging, not connected. It was connected at this end, but not connected at this end, so we spent a lot of time just tracing wiring to make sure what, we didn't want to disconnect something that was as many as...
Well, the reason I'm asking that is because there are other science classrooms that have wiring going onto the ceiling that was added after, after, between when I was president and I was a senior, and it reminds me of this specific row, and it seems to be common.
We did have that. We did have electric, we, we got rid of a lot of that last year with the extension cords and ceiling.
We did, we did, probably in another science room where they needed some pull-down cords, and we had bought the pull-down table, and we cleaned up the electrical in the ceiling that was...
Okay, so that's all, good.
That, that is, as far as I know, all those places are good, yes.
Okay, that was my question on that. Another item I have, Mr. Martino indicated that we have this fitness equipment, the weights referenced here in item thirteen I, is that the case?
Yes.
We already have them?
Yes.
My question is, why are we voting to approve it if we already have them?
Because technically, we have to accept the donation.
The reason that I'm asking this is because it all did often seem, as we had this last run with field trip replaced, that we're doing things after an effect, and it's been going on for years. If we have to approve it, if we have to accept it, then we shouldn't have the equipment or anything, and I don't want to, I'm thankful that we have this donation, don't get me wrong, but we have procedures. And I don't see the merit in voting to approve something if it's already been done. So, please, let's just, if we have the authority and we have to be the ones who sign off on something, then we should be the ones who sign off on it, because at some point, it's going to be something much bigger than just a donation or a field trip.
Especially when it puts us in a position of having to possibly spend twenty-three hundred dollars.
So, that was just my...
In the, the fence, unless I'm mistaken, there's going to be a fence, if you, if you remember the annex, you know the annex gym, there's a space in the back where they have the, the baseball net batting cage?
Right.
That's the space, as I understand it, that the equipment's going to be located in, and the purpose of the fence is to be, since they're loose weights, is to be able to secure, to be able to secure that area so students can't use it unless they're under, under supervision. Is that correct?
And I think there was something about, because I got a call on this about a month ago, there was a time limit again to pick this up, if it was a go or no go. And it was an emergency with George. He had to find a way to get this equipment. I mean, I offered to help him deliver it because he had weight equipment, and he had a couple of guys to help him. They rented a truck real quick to get it, because the person donating had said, "You need to get it out within the next two days."
It's been used a band truck?
I think, I don't know if they did or not. They did.
They did?
Yes.
And what was it cost for?
It was donated.
No, no, what was the three hundred dollars?
Maybe that was for fuel, or he didn't really say.
Well, it's district, it's a district fuel card, so it's...
He just asked, permission to use the vehicle.
Yeah.
Is there a purchase order?
And I don't know if you could classify this as an emergency, when picking up equipment that we had never intended to buy to begin with.
Well, no, we had never intention to purchase it. It was, the offer was made over like a weekend, and it had to be picked up that weekend.
Okay, is there any public comment on facilities? Seeing none, finance committee? Mr. Rathke?
Mr. Wolf, so we continue to look at the seventy eighteen budget, of course, and we do have some state numbers now, I think we all know. We'll wait and see on those. We also did look at some staffing items. We know that people have some consolidation in the elementary level, but there are some questions about needs at the middle school and high school, so I asked the administration if we could flesh those out a little more, because I think that's a combined combination, whether it's especially with finance as well as C and I. So, I would ask that the administration kind of give us some further numbers on what exactly they're looking for as reduction in elementary as well as what their other requests are, so the board can actually make a good decision on those. There's also discussion about perhaps moving an administrative person to a different spot in new administrative role. A little bit back and forth in that one. I, again, I suggested that there be more fleshing out of that so that the board can actually understand what the recommendation is on that, and whether that's something we would agree to or not. So, there's no recommendation on that as far as my belief was. I kind of asked that if you were, if you want that. River Rock lease, we are going to talk about that under a secondary session, that would be the next voting meeting. My understanding is that River Rock does want at least the entire primary center around the discussion, whether we want to go forward with that and what actual lease term should be. We did talk about our transition house out of the high school, about redoing the lease coming up with the I U. Recommendation was to leave the lease as is for the year. We also had a discussion on our lock locks. I know Mr. Small, I think he's continuing to have that, to the board's authority, so we should get back to, a little bit back once we get back on that information. Do you have a second, Mr. Wolf?
Every four years in the year municipal elections, tax collectors are elected. The municipalities, including school districts, have the option of adjusting tax collection commission rates. Back in two thousand five, David Boone entered into deputization agreements with collectors and went to the lock lock system. Subsequent to that, and every four years since, they've continued that arrangement where the local collectors hypnotize the district to collect the real estate for the, you know, all the taxes. And so, in two thousand nine, two thousand thirteen, it moved forward as it has passed. However, in two thousand ten, there was a Supreme Court ruling as a result of a challenge with the district board, the Bucks County. So, I had pointed this out to our solicitor and said, "Where are we now in two thousand seventeen?" However, his, his opinion, as he forwarded, it simply is that it's been in place since two thousand five about a challenge, therefore, he doesn't recommend that any action be taken at this time. And the deadline for doing it is the fifteenth of February in the year of the elections. So, we have a couple days to get it done if necessary, but the solicitor says, "No action is necessary."
And the final piece was, we also did have a discussion about if the E C wants to close, what impact would that have on our budget model going out? And, you know, frankly, there was, you know, some minor savings in utilities, a little bit in staff, but probably the biggest savings would be, you know, deferring, we know we have, we know we have some capital costs that would be involved with the E C, you know, that would be deferred. Some would have to be done to maintain the building, but some of this would be deferred by the H B A C for the afternoon. Any questions?
Next meeting, March second, six P M. at the district office. Any public comment on finance? Seeing none, we'll move to personnel committee. Mr. Kurtz?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. We had our second personnel committee meeting last week. On the agenda was this discussion of job descriptions in the districts. We were provided by the administration with over one hundred and forty job descriptions, and it was of job descriptions that were on the books. And the purpose, one purpose of this committee is to go through and recognize those jobs that have been vacant for a long time, and that we have no intention of filling, so we can excise those job descriptions from our roles. And the administration is going to get back to us next month with their recommendations there. So, stay tuned to a list coming to an agenda near you with a bunch of positions that haven't been filled in a while and aren't intending to be filled. We discussed organizational charts, the current and current organizational chart, and we started various proposals organizational chart, and we've begun comparing, where we compared to other districts, and we looked at their organizational charts just to see how our administration looks compared to some other districts. I'm trying to put together a calendar for the committee, so we have a mandate preferably, and we're looking to be able to accomplish all of our goals in less than a year. So, we have some good news. And then next month, it looks like we're going to discuss all of the job descriptions for the administration, as well as some other topics that I'd be happy to provide. I think board members would be interested to copy of the master calendar, if they would have any feedback. It's just a working document, but I've got it set.
Any questions for Mr. Kurtz? I think it's good that I reviewed that list of positions, and it was pretty, pretty vast of things, positions I'd never heard of, which I know from time to time, we, we, all of a sudden, some position, well, we had this position, it just hadn't been filled, pops up, so...
We still have a focus of position for a person whose job begins to make photocopies. So, I don't know how old that one is, but it took about four hours to put that spreadsheet together in your, I think, that's a lot of time.
If there's no other questions, Mr. Kurtz, your next meeting will be March twentieth at seven P M. at the district office. Any public comment on personnel? Seeing none, we'll move to policy review committee. Mr. Scott?
So, we last met on January twenty-third, and in an shortened session. We didn't really get to any of the new policies on the, on the document, although we have a nice, call it backlog of items from ASBA that we're going to have reviewed over the next several sessions. So, probably in the next voting meeting, we'll have a few to put through for first review for the board. Mostly, we went over a handful of, call it just outstanding policies that we were, you know, either trying to track down information or clarify some of the outstanding information on those before we could put them to the board for review. So, our next meeting is in two weeks, on February twenty-seventh, and then that's when we'll start digging into the backlog of new items from ASBA.
Any questions for Mr. Scott? Your next meeting is March twenty-seventh at six o'clock at the district office.
No, it's February twenty-seventh, two weeks. I'm not sure why it says next meeting.
Okay.
We're, we're meeting in two weeks, and then we'll be, we will be again in March, but the next meeting is in two weeks.
Oh, March and February and March dates are the same.
Yes.
So, technically, it's right. Okay. Any public comment on policy? Seeing none, move to transportation. Mr. Ocasio-Neil?
There was no meeting in, in January because I had to cancel, so we have not, we haven't met in a while. But we will be meeting the day after the voting meeting, the two day after voting meeting here this month.
Any questions for Mr. Ocasio-Neil on transportation? Any public comment on transportation? Seeing none, we'll move to old business. Action list, Mr. Harris, you have an updated newsletter cost feedback?
Yeah, the snow day put us back. The snow day put us back a little bit, but right now, I'm trying to get the final draft of the newsletter and the final pricing without, so I also have to get the postal. We do not have that yet. We were working with the production site. Right now, it's about three thousand dollars, is what we're looking at without postage. So, I should have something to send out to you very shortly.
Compared to what was it before, do you recall it?
It was like four thousand five hundred.
No, it was more than that.
No, it was like twelve, it was like twelve thousand. I remember, because I saw...
I thought it was budget, it was like, the initial cost was, was going to be...
Yeah, I remember when I saw the invoice, I thought the postage was the cost for the whole thing, and it wasn't. It was just one piece of it, so it was about twelve.
Twelve thousand a year. 12,000 a year.
No, for that one issue.
For that one issue. Yeah. So it's much cheaper.
Yeah, another business opportunity is smarter.
Door knobs and newsletters for you. So, yeah.
It was, you know, Mr. Martino could probably weigh in on the postage, but there's savings we didn't, we didn't take advantage of as a, as a nonprofit.
Yes. We spent a fortune on postage and then quite a few pieces were returned. It was, because they were sent out first class, and they sat out at the nonprofit rate like they should have been. The non-deliverable pieces would have just been discarded. So that was a heck of a lot of cost.
Do we, do we budget anything for this? Is there a number in the current budget for this? I'm just curious.
I don't know what the budget amounts. We shopped it around and there's a local person who's doing it for us.
Yeah. No, I don't, I'm not, listen, you guys have been doing your best to track down the cost numbers, asking if we budgeted anything for it.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
So Pio for that?
Okay, if we can, if we can move on. Approve the, we're going to approve the minutes for the January 23rd voting meeting with that edit. The next item is the one-to-one update from Mr. McKnight.
So Connor, right, we took a trip down to string theory to see kind of how it operated. We took a trip down to a string theory school in which I thought it did have a lot of things in common with where we'd like to go. They, they kind of break their program into performing arts school. They're basically using iPad and Apple as a famous school. But they have majors there, which kind of would be analogous to the pathway model we're trying to evolve at the high school. And then, unfortunately, got a chance to see really fantastic work in their majors, performing arts, STEM, different areas like that. But we also were able to see the core courses and compare those. I know, Mr. Harris, is your update of the weekend.
That everyone read?
Okay. Update of the weekend. You'd be like, there was a question about comparing iPads to Chromeos. So we tried to give, give the pun after that. There is?
300%.
And I want to, I want to frame the conversation and then your thought process this way, that we have two substantial problems at the high school coming forward. One of them is that, and Mr. Curry can give you the exact dates, that our text material is not only outdated, no longer being published. We can't get much of the secondary marketing. So I expect some of all of us to supersede the number of books we have. We can't find books for students. That's one problem. The second problem is just that the materials are extraordinarily old. Some are, Mr. 10, 15 years old. They're over 70.
Your average textbook age is about 10, 28 years. I don't want to overstate this, people can tell 28% of your textbooks are 15 years or older. So I'm just, I have no way to understand if this is coming, that we, one way or the other, these textbooks were taken from hands over the half degree class or teaching resources here.
So when we began to look at that issue, that's what led us to looking at the technology and potential solution to the problem. And now, you know, we're joined to average. You can look at Apple, or you can look at, you know, open sources, and there are a variety of open sources. And looking at those two pieces, the iPad itself, Mr. Matts moved away at a technology conference, has given us the number of around 365, you know, in the lease per device, where Chrome would be 300. When the value of, that we found with the app, it's just an instructional material resource, is that through iTunes, iBooks, and iTunes University, there are a lot of sources that will support our teachers and our students. Plus, we'll get technology in hands. And the technology piece, I answered the bonus. The instructional materials and the efficient instructional materials is the challenge. So you can look in the documents that you have, and you can see, for example, American Lit book that you can get for free and click on that link, you'll see the actual book. And there's many more we can see beyond that. Versus if you had to go to open source through Chrome, and you like the Amazon, it's $117. So that's kind of on the material cost side. The second slide, Mr. Harris, will you? Looked at issues really in the professional development, where built into the cost of the iPad in the partnership with Apple, there'd be no additional charge for a professional development tool, both Apple teachers, a badge and system that our teachers would do, and would work through that program. They'd learn many things and methods to use for the Apple device. And for direct names of professional development are built into that 365. If we go to the Google side or Chrome side, the certification is $10 per teacher, and professional development is $2,000, $300. So I won't read each of these with you. You can see them yourselves, but in the end, Chrome costs substantially more. Now, Kathy worked out the whole pricing model for five year run. If you want to, you can touch on that, Kathy?
Yes. Based on the information, the textbook cost and what's out there. All they did was take, Preston gave me the numbers of about $816,000, where there was a total cost for the replacement of all textbooks over the next five years. Then the cost of the lease, which was updated, Scott sent me that, those numbers amounted to about $122,685 annually. With the $816,000 in textbook costs, there's an estimation of, we're not going to be able to do away with every single textbook right away. There's applications that may be purchased. There's, there's also the need for some textbooks that might be better for the students that you would actually have to purchase as opposed to going out to the free resources. So in trying to budget to come up with an estimation, we figured about, if you've got $816,000, 25% of that number would be stuff we can't get rid of because of those situations. So take the 816 minus the 204,000, which is the 25%, you bottomed to about $614,615. And then when you take the annualized cost, the 122,685 times five years, it's a basic rate at this point, now that we've got all the updated numbers, it's a break even. What you're doing is, is you're at a perfect situation now because your textbooks are so outdated. You can go either way, but the cost you're getting, the benefit, I mean, I don't know how you can put a dollar amount on this, this isn't, this is out of my realm, this is more curriculum, is the resources that are available on an iPad versus a textbook. So you're going to get more bang for your buck going the iPad as you would as opposed to going and a textbook. And that's where this cost savings comes in at this point. Now that all the numbers are updated, you're not spending any more money than what we're going to be budgeting anyways.
Let me raise this issue because I said earlier about, we say one thing and something else happens. This was presented to us after we thought a lot of research, that this was going to be a benefit plus a cost savings. Now, here we are two weeks before we're supposed to vote on it to find out, well, there's no cost savings. So I guess my question is, how much research did we do before we presented? I guess that answers my question.
There was research. So I'll respond to that. We, this project has been starting and going at the end of fall and fall over a year. Okay? So when we started with that, we knew we had this issue that we can't get these materials, cannot get instructional materials with its hands. So in looking at the original solution, there is a cost that Scott filed out through some technology pieces that we didn't know existed. I mean, I can tell you all the text material. We put the cap at 25%. If we said no, which is not by any means true, and if all asked to use the free resource, that's $200,000. That's a savings. That's a decision that we pledged when we happened to make this group. There's money to be yielded, but we feel in real transparency, so we're not coming back to it down the road saying, oh, look, you know, we said this, but now it's really that. Here's a conservative number, 25% of the cap. Kathy, I thought about that, that we're going back and forth between the number of what would be a real representative number that we could get by at the high school. She had us at 30%, and I had us at a lower, and some of the time it ended up at 25%. Just to be fair and transparent. And ultimately, if nobody feels it's the way to go, that's why we're having these discussions in the working. Say no, and we'll find another solution. But we have a chance to use the real instructional material, and our teachers are at its hands. At the same cost, that's sort of, that's sort of cost us either way, unless we just don't buy the books and we kind of make photocopies and do things like that, which is a copyright issue and a problem. So we have a real issue looming on us. Here's a chance now, you know, as we work through the problem over here, to, you know, get it. And yes, definitely have that decision. If you want paper, paper will be relevant. I mean, I want to do more.
Mr. Wolf and Mr. Harris, just so we're clear, I'm not saying it's not the way to go. What I'm saying is, one meeting ago, we were told there was a dollar savings. One meeting ago.
I have two items on this, so beating off what? Rich, I'm going to check. One is a potential idea that could result in a cost savings, and the other is something I'd like to see from the administration. So far, we heard a verbal presentation, we saw a PowerPoint, and now we have this little summary here, this side-by-side. I'd like to see something much more comprehensive, a timeline of how this is going to be rolled out, the pedagogy of benefits to it in terms of how we're going to get the information to the teachers, and how the teachers are going to get it to the students. I'd just like to see something much more all-encompassing in a plan, really. Because right now, I'm hearing, we're seeing different things, and I know we want to, we want to do this and we want to do it quickly, but I'd like to make sure we do it right. And I want to see a little bit more of it. It's just a nice thought out. Here's what we're going to do, one, or two, whatever you want to format.
We haven't been able to dig this track. Never been able to share that at the fourth level, but if you'd like that to keep shared, that.
Yeah, I'd like that, but also, all that stuff. Like, what's the city, what kind of cost, what are you talking about? It's the educational side. Because when I was at the string theory school, which you got a medical board member for inviting to that, I was speaking to some teachers, and I know there's different feelings on both sides of the issue here, but there were questions of the support infrastructure, and not on the Wi-Fi end or anything, but the other program, right? Seeing what some of these students were doing, it was very impressive. But they were using software packages and other programs that went well and above beyond the free resources that are in the public domain. So I fear that I have, that we're going to really take advantage of this. I don't want to call it a fear, but I just want to be aware ahead of time, what other costs are going to come down the pipeline. And if there is a great program out there that we want to take advantage of, I don't want to close the door.
Or why we include the 25%. That's where that, you know, the savings that Mr. Martino's referencing are diminished by even aligning your fear, so to speak, of how we're going to support teachers and what absolutely make available to them. That's that 25%. If we cap that number of 25% each year, that's where that is, and that's a substantial.
Well, my main fear about this entire program is, is the cost aspect right now, but I'm worried that it's going to end up being a distraction. We're going to have this technology, but we're also going to have all the textbooks, and we're not going to know where one end and where the other begins. But we'll see, that's why I want to see this plan. So that was my first point. My second idea here, I brought it up at the last meeting, but it was mentioned, I believe Mr. Harris said, that at the end of the board release of the iPads, the district has the opportunity to purchase the iPad for a dollar. Is that, is my understanding correct right there still? Am I on the right path? Okay. What if, and I think this would be a win-win for all parties involved, if a family was interested in purchasing that iPad, what if we set it up, I broke it down, you have 365 divided by four, that's less than 90, or it's less than $100 per year. And I'm not saying every student, we force them to buy it or anything, but if a family wanted an iPad by the time their kid graduated, then what if we had a payment plan or something where that cost is offset? So then the district, really, for those students, for those families who choose to purchase their device after their time to death, you put this up, they can take it with them, they have an iPad at a substantial discount, and then we, the district, don't have to pay, it's cost neutral, it's zero cost to the district. I don't know if that's allowed in that, is there a way to structure an agreement where it's possible?
I, I don't believe that could be done because it's like selling a textbook, renting a textbook. In Indiana, you can do that, but I don't think you can do that here.
But what do we do if we purchase it for a dollar, and their restrictions placed, and what we can do with it? Not about being on a free and clear, decide to put $366 into it. I just want, we can see the agreement. What I'm saying is, if there's room for flexibility there, and surely there is, they're trying to sell us a lot of dollars worth of technology, and maybe we can be able to create it and offer a service to families and also try to save a little bit of money on our end. But again, just an idea.
Can I ask one? Is there not also startup costs, call it startup costs, for, you know, essentially you're converting all your curriculum or most of it from paper to online? So there's a, does that go away? In other words, for the teachers to basically rework their entire curriculum on all these classes and whatnot, I'm assuming that there's a, there's a bit of a cost to that?
So if we take a string theory model, well, if we take a string theory model, and we provide professional development time, and teachers have a critical, there's going to be some critical costs.
Yeah.
So to Mr. Martino's point, he asked me a question one time, are the curriculums already updated? He's asked this a number of times over the, the short time that I know of. You know, why don't we just take the curriculum from Exeter or some other place? And there are copyrights there, but in iTunes, our iTunes University, Petsmay Capital Area IU has made, there are courses now, and I included that for you to click on, to say, and our teachers, if they, you know, were to use that as, because it's been common core line or PA core line, and they use that as their reference point and build their courses around that piece, the cost is diminished. But of course, if we're going to ask teachers like the string theory ones to create a course, then we're going to have to invest in teachers.
Yeah, I get, makes total sense to me. Like, that's why I refer to it as a startup cost. But that also then insinuates that it may not be something you have to do every year, or at least not to the same degree that you would in year one, when you're completely going from.
When they become the authors of the course, obviously, they know it more intimately than anybody. And so we won't, I think any teacher will retweet the rule each year and read things on. Our mindset, to Connor's point, is that we have, you know, what's the implementation strategy plan? Is it two-year model, we'll have a design course plan? So that, it would take two years till we were fully up and independent, so to speak, of the current practice. And teachers would be the ones creating those courses, designing the course.
Originally, we weren't going to throw out all the textbooks when the iPads were delivered. It was a two-year rolling plan to implement. So that's.
My question, and I'm not sure if it's for you, Jim, or Kathy, or Professor Preston, is with regard to the dollar figure quote that we got, the annual dollar figure and the five-year plan, what does that include with, you know, with terms, in terms of either extra iPads or replacement or insurance, or how are we going to handle the sort of, you know, obviously, they're breakable as opposed to textbooks.
That's worked in two.
So I'm just curious what the assumptions were with regard to replacement or insurance, or whatever the case might be.
The actual insurance item is going to be looked at when they decide on the device as far as which direction the insurance, that's what Scott told me. That the, the quote that's 122,000 includes 1,200 iPads, 1,200 cases, there's an Apple Care Select Support, which you probably know what that is more than I do.
Really, Scott's, Scott's our guidance.
That's the operating system.
That's the actual operating.
That's the OS of the operating system.
I recall Scott saying that he would have an extra so that kid didn't have one or.
That was built into the.
I recall saying for that tree, 71 broke.
Right. If the one was presented with 70 extra iPads, and I think we agreed we don't need 70 extras.
I'm just trying to understand the specifics. So I, I just want to understand the assumptions. I'm not saying that the decision was right or wrong.
My assumption's always been, I know there was talk about cost savings, but my assumption's always been that it's actually going to cost more in the long run. You know, that's all been my, my perception of obstacles in the programs. I think it just adds more than just a textbook.
Well, I wasn't, my point in asking the question wasn't just second in favor or.
I'm not, I'm just saying generally, I've never assumed there would be these huge cost savings. That was one of the grandest things.
Yeah, I, I looked at that, the first presentation as, here's the idea, this is what we're proposing to you, what do you think about it? Should we pursue this further? That was, that was kind of my general impression. So then Mr. Martino came back and said, hey, let's put some hard numbers to this. And I think what we've seen is, is the administration respond to that. So, I mean, can you nail everything down, that 25%? That's, that 25% that, that money, that 200,000, that's really where, that's the area that you would hold them, say, here's, here's the, that should be the worst case.
you would hold them, say, here's, here's the, that should be the worst case, improve upon it if you can, but with still providing the best curriculum.
What's our, what's our drop dead here to make a yes or no? Because if we're not, you're going to say no, or postpone it.
I hate to speak for Scott, but this was the way the slides, the technology side, he did share that, that's why we kind of moved it into this month, because we want to take advantage of the high school of having some training in March, on that 17th day, no later than the April 12th day. We want to be underway with some kind of training by April 12th.
So, it's the clear expectation to roll it out for the entire high school for the 2017, 2018?
Yeah, Scott's point would be to roll it out for the first day, and the second quarter, you do not feel that the case is starting.
Right, right, that's right, he did say that.
Start the school year that way, but to give our teachers that, because we have two professional development days in August for the staff, another two in October, and then November 1st and against the first quarter, teachers would be ready to engage, students would be ready to engage, to the plan, there's a summer academy for families, there's, you know, we'll share that.
So, with this being that Mr. Kurt's point would be able to have this kind of more timeline thing?
Yeah, well, you're going to pay for transportation and time, if you're...
Kind of, I'm going to do that. My final question is, did we have any conversation with our teachers on this, whether they liked the iPad, iPad theory, or...
Yeah, we've been all over places for over a year now. You know, originally, the conversation was to have a pilot, buy Google Classroom, Chromebook, or buy Apple Classrooms, that was, the decision was made to go with the Apple piece, for some reasons. We have some teachers who are reluctant, and most of the reluctance resides with our staff and the trust factor of will we really give them professional development, the time to develop. That's really the biggest concern. There's some philosophical concerns about a digital piece versus a real textbook, that's definitely part of it, and there are people who are not comfortable with it. So, our staff is all over the map on it. I think the real question here is, what's best for students and families, because our staff is strong, and will adapt, and make it, you know, make it work if we support them, and that's really the right.
I still have a couple of questions. We talked about 70 additional iPads. How many have we reduced that to?
Well, in a declining, I mean, if you can see...
No, there were 70 additional of both.
Yeah, I don't think you, I think we made that pretty clear, that we weren't going to go 70 with, like, some of the smaller classes that are going to be replacing them. So I think your high school population's going to be reduced slowly, not substantially, but I don't know that you, you know, the discussion was to have a few on hand in case somebody would leave them at home, but I don't know that we had a...
We never had, we never...
Well, that's what I'm asking.
We never had a...
In the total cost structure, how many items are we going to have on the shelf?
I have to check with Scott on that, because he initially put that number out there, but then it was, yeah, it was discussed that if needed, he would have a few on hand for students who forgot theirs or broke theirs, and then if we needed to order more, Apple would deliver, and we would be okay. So we wouldn't have that many on the shelf. I think, was it 20, maybe, I think he may have, but he had teachers, students, and then some on hand in case someone broke or lost theirs.
I'd like that some on hand number before we vote. The other number I'd like before we vote is this discussion of insurance. What are we planning on asking people to pay for insurance, or are we asking them to pay for insurance?
What does, what does some of the other districts do in that case? Do the, do the families pay a fee for the insurance, or...
One of the districts I spoke with, and certainly Scott can speak better than I can, but the one district I spoke with, they're charging $70 a person for their insurance, and then they're setting it up such that it's optional insurance that the parents can purchase. Now, that's one district, so, Scott's surveying more of them, he's not here right now, speaks that, but he's calling other districts.
Now, what about the students that are free and reduced?
So, that is, and Scott was doing that this way.
Generally, that cost is absorbed.
No, I'm not, I just asked a question, before Mr. Martino did.
Yeah, I mean, we want this voted on as soon as possible, but we don't, we have questions that aren't being answered. And my last question is, looking at this handout, can we get a large picture of Mr. McKnight?
It took a lot of...
Did not do that, Mr. Harris did that.
I did, when I was reading, when I was reading this late on Sunday night, because I did actually read this, I did read this, and you know, when, when you start getting pricing of an iPad, the cost of 365, and the Chromebook, which everybody else, you know, the Reading, or Governor Mifflin, I think they go on with the Chromebook, the cost difference savings makes me naturally suspicious, okay, of $841, it almost seems like, and I'm not implying anything, I'm just saying that it seems... Well, the physical book is more expensive. He's saying it's all the... No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just commenting on, boy, you did a great, I think you may have oversold it if it was just a little bit of a cost...
Mr. Harris moved that, he edited that.
Well, no, what I asked, what I asked for was, give me a typical example of a student and the material, and that's why we're doing this. So, the iPad, which I had to research, is closed source, means you're going to one spot, and there's a store there, like iTunes, and I'm a Google person, actually, but I'm working on it, and the savings is through the iTunes and all the available that Apple has for education. Google is just like buying a computer and going to search, and going on Amazon, and downloading the book to your Kindle or something, where Apple, we are partnered with Apple. So it's much different than having a mini laptop, Chromebook, and searching the web for stuff, and then downloading it, where we still have to pay for it. And what I asked was, I said, can we go into iTunes with a Google, and they're like, no. I'm like, okay, I'm learning. So, we did the typical backpack, and these are actually our students, and then side-by-side. So, the cost to fill this up with the tech, not with the material, is what the cost of the iPad is. Then, once we get into other feature areas for support, we are set up currently better to support an iPad than we are a Chromebook, and that's through the IT. No fault, we didn't set it up that way, this is how it is. And there are a lot of to-be-determined costs with the Chromebook that we don't know yet for technology, where the iPad, we're already, just happened to be set up, that's how we are set up in this district, set up for it. So, we have the timeline, we can get it out, and through these discussions, more questions are developing, but we were going to test the iPad versus the Chromebook, but once I saw the cost of the backpack, I was like, well, this is a no-brainer, we can't afford $800 for a Chromebook each, let's go with the iPad. And that's what we started going with, so, we started talking about comparisons, we looked at, we were going to test, what, four or five in each grade or something, and then come back, but it was like, this Chromebook is just too expensive for what we want to do. And a lot of districts give out the Chromebook, but they don't integrate it into the learning of the classroom. It's, we're using these iPads now as a replacement for textbooks and really implementing it. I'm not going to talk ill of other districts, but they may just say, here's something for you to access the internet, and if you want to do research, here you go. We're really making a robust environment with our systems in a closed-source nature. So, we can give the timeline, we can put the cost together. One of the things with the iPad, with this, the iTunes Store, is that we can have more and more information that we're not paying for, and some information we will be paying for, that's why there's a 25% holdover. You know, it's a two-year rollout, and we're going to discover more things as, as we go, so...
Well, before we get off the subject, there's a number of questions that have come out. Is somebody recording these questions, so we make sure that we get the answers in time for our voting meeting, or before our voting meeting?
You want the full, if I get this right, the board wants the full plan from A to Z. You want, you want, I mean, we have the Y, I mean, the Y is easy now on this, is why we chose this, but the implementation, the training, the PD...
How many spares are we going to have, what the insurance details, you know, how that's all going to work?
And I want that special attention focused on the educational benefits, beyond just replacing, switching out textbooks for digital, what other good things are going to come from this?
Okay.
That won't be high in the sky, esoteric, maybe, maybe not, but some things can be pointed, if we're going to do a digital benefit, our students...
Well, the weight of your backpack would probably go from like 40 pounds to 15 pounds.
I'm looking more, you know, like, boy...
Well, that's one reason why we did the side-by-side on the first page, side-by-side, this textbook versus what material we would use to supplement that textbook, that's why we did that.
And I think, you know, the kids coming up now, they're, they're more in tune with the technology, maybe they're more motivated to use the iPad than read a book. You know, I hate to say that. From our generation, you know, mostly, except for you, Mr. Kurt, so, you know, we like, you know, something we can hold in our hand, but now it's all electronic, and it's at your fingertips, so...
And if you go to my report, the links work. So if you go to report that I sent, yeah, the links work, and they'll take you to the material.
But, to Mr. Wolf's point, I just want to respond to what you're saying, I don't want the line to be blurred between, well, at school, you're working, you're learning, you're doing your lessons, you're doing all that, and the other stuff, there's a time for play, so I just want to make sure that they're not, like, I don't want kids to be serving YouTube in study hall, I want it to be reading their, their books.
Mr. Matt's addressed, somebody asked that question last time, Mr. Matt said it would be locked down to, you know, there'd be certain, only certain things that they could do, you know, it would be the same restrictions, it'd be the same restrictions in the, in the web filters that they have at school.
Mr. Kurt, did you ever have, when you were a board member, did you ever have a laptop?
I did, I self-employed, yeah.
Well, you couldn't even get to Yahoo.
Yeah, well, you're 10 years old.
Like, it was so locked down, it was like, you couldn't even, I couldn't even go to Yahoo, so I don't, I would think they can lock them down pretty good.
I do have a couple of comments to make, make sure they're included in the plan. A couple of questions came up from the teacher that I was doing Strength Theory with, Mrs. Romaine, she brought us some really good points, I think, I'd like to make sure that she's... One of the topics of discussion that we have with all the teachers was the ability for kids to cheat on the tests, they can just alt-tab, open up other tabs, and it is a reality of while they're working on a test, actually go find and Google the answer, and Strength Theory did admit that that is a serious concern, that over time, the teachers made their tests intuitively, engineered them intuitively enough that it wouldn't be that easy to Google the answers. So I'd want to make sure that in our plan, that we did address that, because that is a real occurrence. In fact, it just happened at a neighboring school that switched over, not mentioning their name, are you familiar with that, Mr. McKnight, that's what I'm talking about? So I would want that in the plan, what are we going to do, make sure that that doesn't happen, and how we'll train teachers to make tests that are not Google-able. I also, I'm also a little bit concerned about the bias in the materials, the possibility of a bias in the materials in a closed-source environment, I don't know if there is or not, I'm trying to Google it myself now to find out if anybody else is concerned about that. The amount of extras that we should have, of devices, because the kids are going to forget them, they're going to lose them, they're going to break them, they're going to bring them in uncharged, there's a lot of concern. How many do we have to have? I hope that we would poll other schools who have already gone one-to-one, and have come up with some sort of percentage or some, something, and I'd like to see that in the plan, that that was, you know, not just a random number, that we seriously think that through. And I noticed that one of the positions, there was a new position associated with this, that the apple representative did recommend, called a Software Integration Coordinator, and while it's possible that that person can be repurposed, you know, someone else in our school presently, I'd like to see that included, that thought in our plan.
Yeah, Scott, I mean, that's a Scott issue, but he, in the comparison we gave, he felt, and those feel like, with the Apple iPad situation, they have the staff to manage where they currently are. You know, we have, you know, with this, with COVID, he felt like...
I do understand that, I'm just saying, I would like a comprehensive plan, just to speak to Mr. Kurt's push for a comprehensive plan, where all these pieces are thought through, and maybe it works for us in one place.
Thank you, Mr. Bites. Any other discussion on the one-to-one? Okay. Any public comment on the whole business? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Item A, discuss a time that the hearing could be had to discuss the building closure of Burzrow. We need to have 15 days' notice, so what we're looking at is the week of March 20th on. I got Mr. Subers had given me dates of 3/21, 3/20, 21, 29, and 30, and 4, 4, 5, 6, and 12. So, I guess my question is, you know, what, looking at, looking at the last, oh, get my calendar open again. In late March, the week of the 20th, I'm just going to throw out a date of the 21st.
I'm away for work that week.
You're away for work?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I'm out, but...
On Monday, the 20th, there's, there's a couple of committee meetings. Could you have the personnel committee over by 8:00?
Uh, yeah.
Well, Mr., yeah, Mr. Subers thought it would be good to start earlier and have, because they need to have a, they need to have a court reporter. Yeah.
I just have a question about procedure. Weren't we going to vote on the resolution that we started last year?
Yeah, that's, that's something, that's something different than, than this.
But it will be held prior to that decision to close the building?
Oh, of course, because we, even after this hearing, you have to wait 90 days for public comment before you can take any action.
Because if we don't vote the kids out of the school, we can't vote on...
No, but you can, you can have the hearing, and you can have the hearing, and then make whatever decision you want 90 days after that. It could be nothing, say, if we decided, if we decided we're not moving, going forward with the consolidation plan, well, then it's kind of moot, because we, you can't, you can't, but we had the, but we've had that, we've had the hearing, you have to have the hearing, wait 90 days, and then you can take action, and you can take action at any time after those 90 days expire.
But if the resolution fails, and students are not moved out of the elementary school, would we proceed to have a hearing without closing it?
Well...
If we just voted not to move them out?
If you voted...
Are you just assuming that that resolution is going to...
This is the advice of Mr. Subers as far as...
I'm just trying to understand the process, honestly.
Yeah, you can, they're not related, but they're, if you don't move forward with the consolidation, but you already had the hearing, then you had the hearing basically for nothing, okay?
Or is it that the hearing would be canceled?
Well, it depends on what the timing is of the resolution to continue with the consolidation. And that, I'm, I was looking, if we were going to have something, it would be, to continue with the, with the consolidation, it would be, most likely occur on the 27th, which is the voting meeting for, for March. So we could, like I said, Mr. Subers is available at, let's see, get back out of here without closing out. So the 29th and 30th?
No, I feel, if that week works for everybody, I'm just saying, I personally can't...
Well, to Mrs., to Mrs. Bites' point, we could wait until after that decision. Yeah, we can, we can, just say you made it to, just say you made it to 29th, that's a date, it's a, it's a Wednesday, the 29th, that's, is that going to interfere with the Career and Technology Center?
Oh, one, two, three, four, I think that's the last of them, I gotta look it up, sorry.
Maybe that would be a meeting we dismiss.
We have, we have a voting meeting on February 27th, why don't we just vote on this consolidation then?
We have, that's what we just talked about, the consolidation, we're talking about when we would set the date for the hearing.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if we vote on the consolidation in February, the hearing's open till whenever in March. What Mr. Dowsley's saying is, she doesn't feel she needs to be there for the public hearing.
Well, no, I'm just saying, if that, if it fits into your timeline, and everybody else is working, I mean, I can listen if I want to, on, if you throw it on the, but, Mark, no, March 22nd is the JOC.
So are we, are we voting on the...
Because you're still not voting to close this.
The consolidation plan on the 27th?
That's, that would be the plan, is that, are you ready for that, on the 27th?
If that is...
They're moving the fourth grade.
Right. Right. Can you continue on with the?
That, well, it, it's two parts, when we talked to Subers, it was two parts. One was the implement, implementing the Phase 2, which is removing the fourth grade out of BEC, and then the next part is the closure.
So we're voting on the consolidation in the next meeting, to continue the consolidation process, correct?
Of, of February or March, which, he's right, that the fourth grade.
At our next meeting, are we voting on continuing the consolidation process?
No.
No?
Not, like, next meeting, I said, February or 27th, no.
No. So that, that vote is not happening until March, is that correct? And I agree with Mr. Bites, is why are we going to schedule a closure meeting if we don't know if we're going to continue the consolidation?
Because you have to advertise the closure meeting 15 days before you have it, so.
So why don't we have?
You can make it in April.
Why don't we have it?
We can't have it in April.
I'm just saying, because we're not actually clo, we would not be closing until the year after, right? So we, do we have to even have the meeting?
Why pay for a court reporter and then someone to come out and do it if we vote? That would not continue the consolidation?
No, if, if, in, in March the 27th, if we continue with the, say we continue with the consolidation plan, all right, say that passes, we continue along with that, you, you need to then schedule after.
What I said, what if we vote not to go to?
Then you, then you just say.
But then we would have paid that court reporter to come out on 21st, and.
No, what we're, what I'm hearing is we're going to wait until, like, the first week in April?
Yes.
Or, right, okay. This, this makes.
The next cow, then we would put on the Phase 2, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's what I thought.
So for, for April, Mr. Subers is available 4, 4, 5, and 6.
Mike, I think there's still some, is there any reason that needs to be in the spring? Like, how far in advance, assuming once again that this, first of all, Stage 2 of the resolution gets passed, and then there's a third step of the resolution, right? How far in advance of the actual closure do you have to have the public hearing? It seems to me that doing it in this calendar year might be pretty sure.
I think, I think Mr. Subers was saying, if we voted on the second, the second stage of the plan, then you'd want to have the hearing, the earlier the better, because, and that allows for, you know, any other legal proceedings around, around that. Otherwise, you end up dragging it out and potentially keeping that, that grade in that school for a year, you know, another year. And I think that was his, his point, was to, as soon as, again, all you're doing is hedging that you're going to, that you're going to vote to close. But you could, you could decide, we're not closing it.
Yeah.
Right, you have the option.
We don't have to vote to close a building to not put kids in it the next year, right or wrong? Because when we redid, at APC, we didn't vote to close that building, we just didn't put kids in the building while it was being refurbished. Why do we have to vote to close the building just to move this grade out and not put, not assign kids?
Yeah, we, I don't know, we got. But I think what Jeff was saying is, if we're planning on closing it at the end of 2018, if we, the earlier that we vote to do it, if somebody, if, if there would be legal action taken.
Gives more time for that to play out.
It gives more time for that to play out and, and come to fruition so that you may act, that you could actually close at the end of 2018. Because if you wait till May to vote or whatever, and then somebody would file an injunction or something, that has to play out, might potentially have to play out before you could.
Not to mention, then you have to start, if that would happen, then you'd also have time to plan out any physical improvements you'd have to make to the building going forward.
Okay, here's one more question, I know, I really know this document, why do we have to close the building at all if we keep it? I would think you close the building because you're going to sell it or repurpose it, right? Why don't we just, why aren't we just?
That's a state requirement.
I guess I'm trying to understand that.
I think if it's not used as a school building, it has to be.
But it is going to be used as a school building.
No, it's not.
Not for our.
Weren't we going to put kindergarten in there?
No, it's not going to be used for our school.
If it's a BCIU, CJK, that's not the same.
The topic of the discussion, sorry.
I thought we were.
Like, is there a support pool, would we be able to flesh, like, consensus now is having a meeting in April, right? I don't know if we can discuss it in a later meeting, because I just want, in the interest of time and all that, like, we're talking about other issues.
No, I just want to figure out why we're not closing it all. Why do we have to vote to close it all? We're just not putting kids in it. I'm trying to understand that, and I'm sure the public would.
Oh, because, because that's what the law says.
Because we're not going to be putting our own kids in that building.
Correct, like, when we, when they close APC, when they took all the kids out, you got to have a public hearing. Because there's no longer kids within your district in the school, like, you're not using it for an educational facility. You know, it doesn't mean you're selling it, it just means you're closing it for the purposes of education for your district.
But the year we moved them out just to remodel it, we didn't vote to close it, right?
Correct, because you were.
It was just a temporary, so if we're never intending on using it again, it has to be formally closed.
Well, you don't know that we're never, but you're not for an extended period of time.
There's a formal plan, you think, because it's a renovation, about one year, that was a plan, we can keep it back in. But now we're, we're going to go for education plan, so.
Okay. So, April 4th, 5th, 4th, 5th, or 6th of April, make sure I'm in April.
Yeah, 4.
Yeah.
5 or 6 for me.
I'm, what am I, I'm hearing, what, not the, not the 4th? Somebody can't make it.
I think there's a finance meeting on the 6th.
Fourth?
Obviously, we're already meeting, sorry.
I think there's a finance meeting on the 6th.
Dave would probably forget that, no, I don't know, I don't know.
All right, who?
We probably have to meet at 6.
Who, who else can't make the 4th? Is it just Tamara?
You can do this next, we have a finance meeting, but we can't be done just Tamara.
This, it's not yet.
Yeah. Sounds like the 6th.
6th, can you make the 6th?
What time's it coming?
All right, what time, your, your finance meeting would probably, you know, need to wrap it up, by 7:00? Okay, so we'll make it the April 6th. What are we calling that? It's the preliminary, it's a building closure preliminary hearing. That's what the topic is.
It's assuming the resolution passes prior to that, you know.
The next item, if there's no more discussion on that, is to discuss the House bill, Senate bill, Mrs. Bites, you want to, was that your item to discuss?
Yes, I did want some open discussion for the sake of the public, and to put the board itself if we're in unison, perhaps we would want to consider submitting a resolution to our representatives in Harrisburg, because the flyer being circulated by BCIU is, I consider disingenuous. I spoke to Mark Gillan about it, and Mark Gillan, he felt the same way, and he was going to actually address it with them, and he said, if we are, anybody who is interested in pushing, promoting SB 76, the best thing to do would be to contact Dave Reed and ask him to bring it, bring it to a vote as soon as possible. Just a couple of, what I consider misstatements on this Berks County Committee of Legislative Action flyer. One of the things that, they, they said that there's an ine, there would be an inequity in education funding will lock in place. The study I saw said that it's such, that there would be an exact same, identical percentage per kid based on the funding formula. Although it could take years to schmooze that funding formula, it's basically going to be as equitable as it could be. Some residents will continue to pay significant amounts of property tax, it didn't say temporarily. Yes, we would still have some property taxes based on your individual debt in your district, because the, the new proposal doesn't fund each district's debt. So for a period of time, you'll have the increased sales tax, which is 7%, on more items, but you'll still have things that are not taxed at all, but the, and the amount of the debt that your district is carrying will still be based on your property, will still be funded by your property tax. Though you will have some significant property tax, and it's not going to be significant, there will be some residual property tax, it does go away, and again, this flyer, which is, which is what I have argument with, is disingenuous. Furthermore, what they dealt under key points, they don't point out that seniors are fully expected to benefit. And if you spend an average of $8,000 a year, which you could argue that, but that's, that's the estimate that I saw, the study, our seniors might, will be likely to spend, 7% of all that, if every bit of their spending was taxed, it'd be except this $550, compare that to the fact that they have no property tax, the way at the beginning. The things that are exempt, still will be exempt from all sales tax, so food stamp purchases, utilities, home heating, fuel, health, hospital, dental bills, pharmaceutical drugs, home healthcare, tuition, daycare, and your charitable contributions. Furthermore, HB 76 could cause our house values to rise, instill in our cabinet, our economy, and I just, you know, passionate about it, and I just thought that I would like to know if the rest of the board thought, and if we, like, we're going to.
I just have a quick question. Who was on this Committee of Legislative Action? What is this group?
It's the superintendents from Berks County.
So it's all, it's administrators?
It's the IU.
And they have this, so we have these administrators who are lobbying Harrisburg, funded by the taxpayers?
How it was, how it was described when we were there was, you know, instead of coming out as an opposition or supporter, they would simply phrase, regardless, I'm, I have, everyone has their opinions of how it was laid out, but it was, here's what the questions are that they have, you know, and these are the things that concerns, the questions that they have. They weren't openly coming out and saying, you know, we're against this or we're for this, you know, you can make your own determination of what you think of the flyer. They, I won't characterize a lot of the comments that I heard, you know, from others in the room, but, you know, so I thought, you know, this is something that is, is being done by the IU, I felt like I should share it with the board so everyone has an idea of what, you know, what their take is on it.
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate it. I just have a lot of questions about the process here, if the folks are the administrators, the superintendents of the school districts that are now being, becoming, having a little lobbying organization that doesn't include the elected representatives, your people in the communities, and rather it's the superintendent, that doesn't sound, and even the branding on it, the Committee on Legislative Action, it sounds, I don't know, it's just, I don't know if it's anything the IU can be involved in, but it's not really a session discussion right here, I guess. Maybe it is, because we have a member, are you a member of the COLA by virtue of your office?
I think so.
Okay.
Yes.
I showed up, and they, they had a breakfast, I showed up. And they brought local, they brought state legislatures, legislators in to ask questions, and that's all, it's been just a bunch of questions.
I have the newsletter.
Well, yeah, they asked a lot of questions.
As you know, as a former member of the IU, a lot of, most of the funding for the IU comes from the state, so obviously they're very active in trying to secure additional funding, so they're always talking to their local legislators about how, for CJK, and all this, how they get additional funds for the 40-year program, so they're always involved.
They gave me bacon, I was there.
Is any, oh, before we, we want.
I was going to say, as far as, besides a couple of comments, I wanted to, you know, thank the supervisor for having me here tonight at that.
You stole my, you stole my item, you stole my.
And I was also applying to thank him, say I'm sorry, and see, this is Colleen, Colleen Dean, I mean, she's been a great teacher, and certainly touched, touched on, on lives of my kids, so, you know, I'm sorry to see you go.
Actually, we've, we've just stopped paying her, she's a volunteer now.
I just, I just, I just saw the dollar.
Yeah, she's volunteer, we just stopped paying her, so, this is the, the best of both.
Yeah, I particularly enjoyed the, the walk-around that we had today, you know, so many times we get email at the board, say, hey, you know, my students being educated in the, in the janitor's closet, and, and we got to see all the janitor's closets and how they're not janitor's closets, so we're ready for those, you know, calls or, you know, emails. So it was very helpful to walk around and actually see that there is a substantial amount of space here, even if you don't repurpose some spaces. I know, I'm not, I'm not. So that, this is going to segue into my next, because the comment was made, do we want to have a similar outing at APC?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like, put my own, my own opinion, I like that year-over-year full plan that you had, that outlined what the rooms would be used for year-over-year, and that should be the.
Right, and the open rooms, and, you know, they had, where their growth, if they had growth, you know, where those rooms would be populated with additional students.
That was helpful.
Yeah. Can we, can we do, you want to do Abney for the voting meeting?
Sure.
Do we get, like, more comfortable chairs?
I don't know. I'm standing.
I don't find these any.
Scout's going to have to look at this stuff.
Well, either that or the.
Either that or a committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole.
So, we can do the next voting meeting there. It's, it's up to everyone.
Yeah, let's do it.
Committee, will we do the voting meeting?
We need more than a half an hour, we have a active session over there.
We're going to need more than a half an hour.
Start earlier? If we're going to do the tour, say, can the tour be earlier?
What do we have?
We're not starting the board meeting at 8:00.
We have facilities, are not facilities, policy, can you end policy at 7?
6:45.
Well, yes.
Certainly, you can have a policy.
Yeah, man. Yeah, we can end policy at 7.
Or 6:45, is that better?
Yeah. Does Dave have more comfortable chairs over there, did you see that? That's, that's.
We got benches, with spikes, sitting there.
Okay.
Thank you to whoever set all this up, to send you two, by the way, having to move all this stuff.
Those little kindergartners were working all day, those little hands, little laborers.
Yeah.
All right, so, all right, well, the, the voting meeting will be next, the next Monday at 7:00, so long as we can get policy wrapped up.
Two Mondays.
Yeah, the voting meeting. The next, the next voting meeting Monday.
27.
Sorry, yeah, yes, yes, so that gives us a half an hour for a walk-around like we did today, so. All right. Is there any presentations by the public on, on issues?
Should we adjourn?
All right, the committee of the whole is adjourned.